February 18, 2020 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And we're really, really blessed this morning to have Father Papa George to lead us in the invocation and then Veteran Kenneth Richards to lead us in the place of allegiance. So Father, if you'd come up, those who are willing and able, please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly King comforted the Spirit of Truth, present everywhere and filling all things. The treasure of blessings and the giver of life, come and dwell in us and bless us from every stain, a Savior, so is a good one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy immortal have mercy on us. We offer thanksgiving to you, Lord, for all your gifts and blessings. We humbly come to you and ask that you may send upon us your heavenly Spirit to enlighten our hearts and minds. Give us your wisdom and knowledge. Give us patience, love, and kindness. Help us to know your will for your people whom we serve. Guide us in all our decisions to do what is best for them. Help us to shine with your love and compassion. Grant us your peace and your love. For glorified is the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and always, and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, and ever-living justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, Mr. Richards. Appreciate it. Thank you for leading us in the pledge. Okay, with that, John, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, we would ask that the applicant would stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that case. We would ask that the opposition would also stand and raise their hand so that they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and the opposition, both parties will be asked to become, to come forward, be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concern. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process for reserve time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after the 10-minute presentation periods, the Board of Commissioners will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn and would not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-67 of 2019, 20 Holdings LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. So Z-67 of 2019 will not be heard. Resounding case Z-4 of 2020, Acworth Commercial Truck Parking Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. So Z-4 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-6 of 2020, CRN Development LLC. This case has been withdrawn, been withdrawn without prejudice. So Z-6 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-16 of 2020, Coda Properties Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And land use permit number three of 2020, Sir Sabiris SFR Holdings LP. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, there are a number of cases on today's agenda which have been continued or held and will not be heard today. First case is SLUP 13 of 2018, Kennesaw Jewish Center Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March 17, 2020 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So SLUP 13 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-62 of 2019, Embry Development Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-62 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-76 of 2019, St. Benedict's Episcopal Day School Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-76 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLUP 4 of 2019, A1 Auto Coors LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP 4 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLUP 17 of 2019, St. Benedict's Episcopal Day School Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP 17 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-1 of 2020, Noel Construction LLC. This case was continued by the planning commission until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-1 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-3 of 2020, David Manna. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-3 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-7 of 2020, Seven Springs Development Company Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-7 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-11 of 2020, Cameron General Contractors Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the April 7, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-11 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-13 of 2020, Arturo Martinez. This case was held by the planning commission until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-13 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-14 of 2020, Andres Estrada. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-14 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-19 of 2020, Traden LLC. This case was continued by the planning commission until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-19 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-20 of 2020, Core Five Industrial Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-20 of 2020 will not be heard today. LUP 4 of 2020, Carissa McConkey. This case was continued by the staff until the March 3, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 4 of 2020 will not be heard today. Other Business Number Three of 2020, Credit Union of Georgia. This case was continued by the staff until the March 17, 2020 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Number Three of 2020 will not be heard today. Other Business Number Five of 2020, Material Handling Systems. This case was continued by the staff until the March 17, 2020 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Number Five will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there are a couple of cases that need to be continued by the board. First case is resounding case Z-17 of 2020, Arput Patel. The applicant would like to continue this case, Mr. Chairman, Board, to talk to the neighbors some more about the concept.
I move that we continue the zoning case for the next zoning hearing.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Board, also SLUP 2 of 2020, Legacy Christian Schools Incorporated. That case needs to be continued. There needs to be some more, I think, dialogue between the staff, the elected officials, and neighbors concerning this application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it's Mr. Chairman and Board members. Although the neighbors are in all agreement and everything, and we had some last minute things that I've asked the school to look at, and some of it came in a little bit late, and I haven't had a chance to look at it at all. And we talked about it this morning, and I think that more than likely this will end up on consent next month, but I would like another 30 days to kind of go over the carpool and the final stipulation letter. So I make a motion to continue, or yeah, continue SLUP 2 until the March 17 zoning hearing.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. And the last one I have, Mr. Chairman, Board, is Other Business Number Six of 2020, Farmers Branch LLC. This is a case on Highway 41 at Acres Mill. One of the county departments submitted comments in a little bit late, so I think the elected official would like to take some time to look at their comments.
Yeah, John, they were more than a little bit late. We got them yesterday afternoon, and we make a big point out of the applicants getting information in on time, and DOT turned it in yesterday afternoon, which I think is unacceptable. And here's a case that was on consent, and now we have to continue it because of late information from DOT. So I make a motion to pull Other Business Item Number Six from consent and continue it till the March 17 zoning hearing.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phones. If the phones ring, they do interfere with the broadcast and the presentations, so please turn the volume off on your cell phones. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years of me proceeding the filing of a resoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more is made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And lastly, anyone participating in today's hearing who plans on presenting a video, PowerPoint, or other digital document should have presented those materials to our communications department prior to this hearing starting. The communication staff does need to look at these and screen them to make sure they don't get viruses through the county network. And these may be emailed in the future to presentations@cobcounty.org. The screening must be completed prior to the start of the meeting. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to start the consent agenda. Okay. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for February 18, 2020. Resounding case Z-56 of 2019, KO Management Incorporated. Request rezoning from R-20 and NRC to RA-5 for the purpose of a residential subdivision in land lots 37 and 39 of the 17th and 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Mapleton Parkway, the north side of Wood Valley Road, and on the east side of Glor Circle. The planning commission recommends approval to the RA-5 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan with the last revisions date of January 23, 2020, included with the letter of stipulations from Mr. Parks Huff received by the zoning division on January 29, 2020. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff received by the zoning division on January 29, 2020, not otherwise in conflict with the following changes. A, Item Number Five, third sentence, change the word reviewed to reviewed and approved. B, Item Number 10, delete in its entirety. C, Item Number 11, subset B revised to reduce the size of an approved buffer. Number three, no land disturbance permit shall be issued until the existing structures on Glor Circle and Mapleton Parkway have been demolished. Three A, the existing home on Mapleton Parkway to be demolished no later than 90 days from the Board of Commissioners' final decision on this case. And three B, the existing buildings on Glor Circle to be demolished no later than one year from the Board of Commissioners' final decision on this case. Number four, the existing home on Wood Valley Road to be demolished no later than the issuance of the fifth building permit, or no later than one year from the Board of Commissioners' final decision on this case, whichever comes first. Number five, a total of 10 guest parking spaces to be provided. Six guest parking spaces are shown on the plan. Remaining four guest parking spaces to be provided in the 30-foot paved roadway, which shall be detailed during the plan review process. Number six, front setback to be 25 feet, except for a light eight, which is reduced to 18 feet, as shown on the site plan. Seven, the following rear setback variances shall be granted. Seven A, lots 1 through 9 and lots 11 through 13, reduction from 40 feet to 30 feet. Note, the landscape buffer is included in the setback. Seven B, lots 14 through 16, reduction from 30 feet to 20 feet. Note, this does not include the landscape buffer, which is in the common area. Eight, and number eight, staff comments or recommendations otherwise in conflict with this recommendation. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-56 of 2019? We have one person opposed. That's school district.
Got to go to regular, right?
So we're pulling that one off consent. Resounding case Z-69 of 2019, Mike Blackburn. Request rezoning from GC and NLI to HI for the purpose of parking and storage of heavy equipment used in utility construction in land lots 866 and 872 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Riverside Parkway and White Road. The planning commission recommends deletion of requests to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on September 19, 2019, with the following changes. One A, rear setback to be changed to 30 feet. One B, office building to be adjusted to meet the setback requirements. One C, modifications as required by the Department of Transportation. And one D, an eight-foot landscape enhancement strip to the right-of-way on Riverside Parkway and Bob White Road. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garver Samms Jr., dated November 5, 2019, not otherwise in conflict with the following changes. Two A, Item Number 12, correct the subnumbering to A through F. Two B, Item Number 12, add subset G to read as follows. Change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning. Three, permanent restroom facilities which are connected to water and sewer to be provided to any use of the site. Four, any fencing to be to the interior of the landscape enhancement strip. Number five, landscape enhancement strip adjacent to Riverside Parkway and Bob White Road right-of-way. The purpose of the landscape enhancement strip is to provide visual screening of any fencing and vehicles. Number six, all parking of vehicles and equipment to be on a hardened surface. Number seven, curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Riverside Parkway and Bob Wright frontages. Note, this deletes the reference to redevelopment in the Department of Transportation comments. And number eight, staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-69 of 2019?
Yes, just like to add the following stipulations, that the district commissioner is to approve the parking plan for vehicles and equipment, also final building architecture and elevations, and landscape plan inclusive of buffers and fencing along Riverside Parkway, excuse me, inclusive of buffers, fencing, and landscape strip along Riverside Parkway and White Road.
I just have my, I'm going to support this, Commissioner Cupid. I just, in light of the fact that Lake Lanier is one of, near its 15-year high, the applicant knows that this is in the FEMA's 100-year flood plan. Is that correct? He's aware of that. Okay, that's fine. Let me where. She's just adding a stipulation, that's all.
Okay, rezoning case Z-2, Mond Igbenehianhaya. Request rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of a personal care home in land lot 39 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Mapleton Parkway, north of Pine Valley Road. The planning commission recommends deletion to the LRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 1, 2019, with the following changes. One A, those changes necessary to meet DOT requirements. And one B, to provide a minimum of four parking spaces. Number two, a personal care home use only. Number three, variances shown in the zoning division comments. Number four, waiver of the landscape buffer requirements while used as a personal care home. Number five, repaint the exterior of the shed to an earth-ton color. Number six, property is located within a design guideline area, and therefore subject to those guidelines when improvements are made that trigger the guidelines. Number seven, the district commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that, A, increase the overall square footage of a building, B, reduce reduction in the size of a buffer, C, change that which is in conflict with an express condition or stipulation of zoning, and D, requires a variance or violates the Cobb County ordinance. And number eight, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? I'd direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-2? I'd direct show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-5, Landmark Properties Incorporated. Request rezoning from GC Omar to PVC for the purpose of purpose-built student housing in land lots 359, 360, 361, and 362 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southeast corner of Towne Park Drive and George Busby Parkway. The planning commission recommends deletion, or excuse me, the planning commission recommends approval to the PVC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Revised site plan dated January 21, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garver Samms dated, A, January 3, 2020, B, January 21, 2020, C, January 24, 2020, and D, January 29, 2020. Number three, purpose-built student housing only. Number four, district commissioner to approve the final building architecture prior to permitting. And number five, staff comments or recommendations, including but not limited to the following. A, fire department comments or recommendations. B, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. C, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And D, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-5? I'd direct show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-8, Brandon Investments LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 and LI to LI for the purpose of office warehouse in land lots 608 and 609 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Lansky Werber Road, on the east side of Factory Shaw's Road, and on the north side of Hartman Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January 7, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated January 29, 2020, with the following change. A, Item Number Five, change wooden screen gate to steel screen gate. Number three, a gate with a Knox box being installed to block access to Lansky Werber Road, except for emergency vehicles. Location of gate to be determined at plan review. Number four, curb, gutter, and sidewalk to be added along Hartman Road and Factory Shaw's frontages. Note, this deletes the fee in lieu of installation in the Department of Transportation comments, number five. Number five, variance listed in the zoning division comments. Number six, planning division comments or recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Number eight, fire department comments or recommendations. Number nine, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And number 10, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-8? I'd direct show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-9, Michael L. Wilson and Chestnut Street Partners LLC. Request a rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of an office and storage for a carpet and floor cleaning company in land lot 2 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of North Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on December 2, 2019, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final building architecture. Number three, site plan review comments or recommendations. Number four, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? I'd direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-9? I'd direct show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-12, Yasmin Benachay-Beton. Request a rezoning from CF to R-12 for the purpose of single-family houses in land lot 180 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Veterans Memorial Highway. The planning commission recommends approval to the R-12 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on December 5, 2019, with the following changes. A, side setback to be 10 feet. B, rear setback to be 40 feet. C, addition of driveway turnarounds. Number two, the homes to be constructed shall be a minimum of 2,500 square feet of finished, heated, and cooled square footage. The exterior material shall be brick, stacked stone, stucco, wood, indoor cement-based siding. No vinyl siding is allowed. And at least 50% of the front elevation have brick and/or stacked stone. Number three, the homes shall be traditional, craftsman, and style. An architectural review committee shall be established with a representative from the builder, a representative from the Mapleton Improvement Coalition, and a representative from community development. The architectural review committee shall review and approve all elevations with final approval by the district commissioner. Number four, variance on the side setback for exterior lots to be reduced from 20 feet to 10 feet. Increase the side setback for interior lots from 5 feet to 10 feet. Number five, existing houses to be demolished within 120 days of the Board of Commissioners' final zoning decision. Number six, the driveways to be replaced with turnaround added to the driveways. Number seven, sidewalks to be installed. At rate, the district commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that, A, increase the density, B, change that which is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, C, requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. And number nine, staff comments or recommendations otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z-12? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-12? Keep going. I'll keep going. All right. So we'll keep going on to Sam. Okay, rezoning case Z-18, the Revive Land Group LLC. Request rezoning from LI to RM8 for the purpose of townhomes in land lots 34 and 35 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Old Powder Springs Road, west of Dunn Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the RM8 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January 24, 2020. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated February 4, 2020, and received at the February 5, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, not otherwise in conflict. Number three, no one person or entity may own, control, or manage more than 5% of the units at any one time after the initial sale of the units. Number four, applicant to remove all existing curb cuts on Old Powder Springs Road, including the curb cut at the end of the road. Install curb, gutter, and sidewalk in those areas. And number six, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-18?
But I get your point. And there are certain circumstances. Okay. The gentleman from the school board, if you'd come on up here, please. The gentleman from the school board, if you'd come on up here, please. Hi, good to have you back.
Good morning.
Let's go ahead and hear what your issue is, because I think we know what it is. We want to hear it for sure.
Okay.
Because I think a lot of us have the same question.
Again, I'm Charles Sprayberry with the Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition, Z18, will cause concern for CCSD as it will result in impact to schools already over, already over capacity, such as Mableton Elementary School.
Let me ask you something.
Sure.
Because I had the same question that I think was Z56, the first one.
Yes, sir.
Is there a plan to add a high school down there?
We're not adding a high school, but we're adding on to Pebblebrook High School.
Okay, all right. So with the addition, how many more students do you think will come in? Are you planning for them?
It should accommodate the overcapacity of 600,000, which is why I did not mention that one. Mableton is the only one that's overcapacity that we don't have plans for to address right now.
That's the middle school?
No, the elementary school.
Elementary school. Same, the same issue about the overcrowding.
Yes. It's Mableton Elementary School is the one that's overcrowded.
Yeah.
For both of them.
So let me ask you something.
Sure.
And, you know, you still have the right to raise your hand and push us to regular, but if, if any of the commissioners were indicated in the vote during the consent vote that they, you know, that they were going to not support that motion, would that satisfy your concerns? Or you still want to hear the whole thing? Because here's the issue.
Yeah.
Here's the issue is that it's a legitimate issue, okay?
Right.
I mean, but I'm not sure what the board can do to solve, to resolve that issue, but I think you want to highlight it.
That's correct.
And you're already on film, okay?
Right.
You have a statement here, and I think that's, there may or may not be some other commissioners that may share that sentiment.
Okay.
But if you want to hold it to regular, there is no, you know, you have the right to do that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a special exemption here just because it's just one, you know, one party. So it's really in your hands.
No, I have no issue. We have it on record here right now, so I have no problem with that.
Okay, so we can leave it on consent?
Yes.
Both 56. Commissioner Cupid?
I have stipulations to add to C56, because when it was polled, I didn't add it.
Okay.
But my desire would be for us to figure out a path forward for how we address these issues of capacity, because when we diligently work with the community and the applicant to resolve issues coming here, you know, it helps us to understand the process of this meeting and knowing what those concerns are in advance.
Right.
And the school board is always going to have an issue with our applications, and they're always going to bring it up at this meeting. It would seem to me that there would be another form where we could address the larger policy issue, because it's very difficult for us to really give full weight to those concerns considering the significant steps that would have to be taken to build a new school. And I certainly don't think that it's the direction of the school board to encourage the board of commissioners to not ever build residential housing, whether it be for multi, whether it be for families or seniors. Yet every time we have a family or senior development, we get opposition.
Well, it does provide you the information. If we were not to bring this to your attention, then we would be remiss in our responsibility to let you know that these are areas of concern.
Right.
That's all, we're simply citing areas of concern.
But my request is, if these are issues of concern, then my thought is that these are concerns that should be addressed. But my observation is that this may not be the right form for that, even though you're getting it on the record, what we have is just continuation of the same concern. Is there another form where we can have a discussion to talk about projections of school builds and capacity, so that we are not necessarily overlooking your concerns when you come to this one?
I will certainly take that message back. As we plan for each SPOS program, that is an open program where we are able to address concerns where we know developments are arising, so that's addressed in our SPOS program. But I can certainly take your message back and see if there's some other.
Mr. Schott?
John. On every zoning application, when you get it, there's a preliminary plan review. The applicant sits down with all the different departments to go over their proposal, correct?
Correct.
Is the school board there?
No.
Okay. So the first thing that could happen is, what happens is that when an applicant files an application, they come in front with the zoning, and there's what we call initial plan review, where water and stormwater, or sewer and fire, everybody has a meeting where the applicant sits down and they go over what those different concerns are, because that's how the final zoning analysis book is written with all the comments. And my, my time up here, it's great that you're here, because for most of the time that I've been up here, nobody came from the schools, and half the time, the page was empty. And so I think that where we're at now, Commissioner Cupid's comments, is that I think that somebody from the school system needs to be part of the preliminary plan review, just so that we hear their comments ahead of time instead of just today. And I also think that, you know, you're given a page in the zoning analysis book, there's not a whole lot of use of it, I think, as it could be used. I mean, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot of outside agencies that are not part of the county government that are given that opportunity. And what I've seen in the past is that the school system until recently has not really taken advantage of the fact that the county is asking for your inputs.
Right.
So I think that that page can become more robust, and I think that, you know, potentially having them included in the preliminary plan review. I mean, it doesn't necessarily address the issue, but for example, I know in my discussions with the school system, I think you use, what, .7 children for every?
Every.
Right, for when you're doing.
Right, for every residence.
So, I mean, they, they have a formula. They're going to be able to tell us the numbers, and, and you can immediately see what the impact's going to be. So, but I agree with Commissioner Cupid that this forum, it's almost kind of, it's a little bit too late, especially when you have something that the commissioners worked on with staff and the community, and it's on consent, and then all of a sudden have, I mean, and like the chairman said, we pretty much, we know what you're going to say.
Right.
So, that's just some thoughts.
Yeah, first of all, I want to commend your persistence, okay, in coming here. But that's another example of the speed of government, which is always slow. But I think that because you've been here now, you're, we now are aware that when you're here, we need to be more and more conscious of that. What I'm seeing here today is we have to go back and try to be more inclusive about the school board in our, in our analysis. So we will work to that end, all right?
Okay.
I will, I will personally ensure that, you know, what Commissioner Cupid said, what Commissioner Oates said, we'll bring that to fruition, because as we get more dense in the county, more people come here, because people want to come here, one reason is the school system.
Certainly.
All right? So we have to do, we have to do some things differently here to make sure that when we come to these meetings here, even though we may have disagreement, at least they're brought out earlier rather than at the back end, when we're kind of like, okay, what can we do to help you? And there isn't much we can do.
Right.
Okay, so.
And I do think that earlier discussion, for example, some of the apartments, you know, there was a lot of apartments built in the Cumberland area in the last couple of years. But one of the ways that we avoided overcrowding Brumby and East Cobb Middle was we limited the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, and more had one-bedrooms. And so when the new schools opened, they did not open overcapacity as a result of those apartments that were built. So, I mean, there are ways to kind of get the development that the county's looking for at the same time without negatively impacting the schools.
Just, and just to add to that, there may be different policy interests for different parts of the county, and I would just encourage us to have some long-range comprehensive planning discussions about this. We look at our comprehensive plan in January that sets the tone for the year with respect to our future land use map. Maybe this is something we sit down together to address, because again, it's, I don't want it to look as if we are not considering your views. It's just, I think this is more of a collaborative, long-range process.
Right, certainly.
Yeah, there was a stipulation I needed to add to Z56 that I don't want to.
Okay, but first, I just want to make sure that we're okay.
Yes.
That we can leave the 56 and Z18 on consent. And with my assurance to you from the other commissioners, that we will get back to you and Mr. Raggedale in the very near future to see how we can make this process better.
Okay.
But I, again, I want to commend you for coming here. Can't be easy all the time to come up here and like, all right, but you're a public servant, and that's what we have to do sometimes. So again, thank you for coming today.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Commissioner Cupid, yes?
Yes, for Z56, I would like to add district commissioner to approve final landscape plan and building elevation and architecture. And the one we're on is. Yes, the applicant can approach Kevin.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. I know we've had discussion regarding the rental limit. I would like to use the county default of 10%, and wanted to know if the owner would be opposed, or the applicant.
The, the way the current stipulations were proposed, and I just want to discuss that for just, I don't want to drag it out, but since you're asking about that, yes, the 10% rental limitation is agreeable. But we, we had added a stipulation that Planning Commissioner Porter had added regarding no more than 5% of the homes after the initial sale could be owned or managed by a single entity, to try to also address any type of future rental situation. But we need to make sure we're excluding secured lenders.
Can we, can we just strike that?
We can.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be better for us.
Yes. So I'd like to strike Planning Commission stipulation number three, and add that the rental cap is limited to 10%.
And that's agreeable.
Too late, you said yes.
And then lastly, add district commissioner.
Hold on, Commissioner, one second there. There's hand and arm signals going on here, from the front and back of the room.
I thought I saw him.
If the applicant would come up here, it'd probably be a lot easier. This is 18.
18.
It's a, I don't want to drag us into a public hearing situation over the one issue, but I know that in our discussions with Mableton Improvement Coalition, they had initially proposed, given the consideration of where this property is located, a rental limitation of 15%. It's something that, as a result of our community discussions, it's just a very sensitive area, and we want to make sure that we protect their ability to move forward on it, so that consideration could be.
I think we should probably discuss it in a public hearing. I don't want to.
Certainly your priority.
I would like to see this move forward in consent, but I would like to hear more from the applicant as to their reasoning behind that, and there are some reasons I have towards leaning to the 10%.
Sure. Very understandable, Commissioner, thank you.
So what moves, what moves Z18 to regular?
C56 back to consent. Okay. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda, LUP number one.
No, sure he did.
Kenneth Richard requests a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more adults in vehicles than allowed by county code in land lot 2 or 3 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Villa Drive, north of Villa Ricker Road. The planning, planning commission recommends approval for 24 months. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP number one? Let's direct show there's no one opposed.
So, is there a reason for all the vehicles, because the kind of treatment that's happening there? They need all the vehicles for that? Okay, that's what I thought. Thanks.
Land use permit number two, Harmony Francis, requests a land use permit for the purpose of residential use of the second floor in land lot 637 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southwest corner of Canton Road and Blackwall Lane. The planning commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to residential use of the second floor is for the applicant only, and no parking in the right of way. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP number two? Let's direct show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda, SLEP1, Landmark Properties Incorporated, request a special land use permit for the purpose of purpose-built student housing in land lots 359, 360, 361, and 362 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southwest corner of Town Park Drive and George Busby Parkway. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, revised site plan dated January 21st, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis Samm Jr. dated A, January 3rd, 2020, B, January 21st, 2020, C, January 24th, 2020, and D, January 29th, 2020. Number three, purpose-built student housing only. Number four, district commissioner to approve final building architecture prior to permitting. Number five, staff comments or recommendations, including but not limited to the following. A, fire department comments or recommendations, B, water and sewer division comments or recommendations, C, stormwater management division comments or recommendations, and D, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP1? Let's direct show there's no one opposed.
Sheriff Burl has a comment.
Yes, I would just like to add for the record, the code for purpose-built student housing, which specifies the permitted use under PVC with a special land use permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And this is tied to Z5.
Okay. Moving into other business cases on the consent agenda, other business item number one of 2020 is to consider a stipulation amendment for David W. Collins, Sr., regarding rezoning case Z57 of 2001, for property located at the southeast intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Club Road in land lot 43 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, use of property is limited to a printing company. Number two, site plan received by the zoning division on December 12th, 2019. And number three, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number one? Let's direct show there's no one opposed. Other business item number two.
Chairman, I have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
Yes. If you may approach, please.
Good morning. Are you okay with adding an architectural review committee for the site? I spoke to someone from the Mableton Improvement Coalition who said that they were in communication with you prior to the hearing.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to add that as a stipulation then.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Landscape review, okay, this is for landscape review, not architectural review. I'm hearing.
Are you, you okay with that?
You're okay with landscape review committee? Okay.
I'm sorry, can we just get your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name's David Collins, Sr.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to add a stipulation that we have a landscape review committee consisting of the applicant, a representative from the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and community development, with final approval from the district commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Other business item number two of 2020 is to consider a stipulation amendment and site plan amendment for Ketten and Valerie Desai, or Valley Desai, regarding rezoning application Z44 of 2002. The property is located on the east side of Abbey Green Court, south of Islington Drive, in land lot 302 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Buffer to be, to be reduced to a 10-foot landscape buffer with a fence. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number two? Let's direct show there's no one opposed. Item number last is other business item number nine of 2020, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for Amber Shea LLC regarding rezoning application Z13, 2019, for property located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway and on the north side of Old Powder Springs Road in land lot 1298 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, stipulations 13 and 14 to be amended to remove the parking lot striping requirement. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant's representative is present, is there anyone here opposed to other business item number nine? Let the record shows no one opposed?
The only question I have is, why, why all the DOT recommendations, the only change is the striping? And then they're trying to add all these other things in there, what does that have to do with this OB?
I know it's OB, it's just has significant impact because BMH is a.
All right, so if you're kind, you're fine, just add just some questions, we went from striping to. Okay, all right.
The applicant may be able to address that in greater detail, but there's also another stipulation on that other business item that we wanted to address, which was stipulation number three. If the applicant can approach.
There was another con- stipulation, item one B, that had six, uh, parallel spaces and we needed that revised to say four, uh, spaces instead of six in that location. If we could add that as a condition.
Yes, I'm fine with adding that.
Okay, did we add that stipulation, I just want to make sure we got it right?
Yes, I have, we got it added to reduce stipulation.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'd like to ne- add another, other business item to consent if there's no one here in opposition for other business item number seven.
Commissioner Cupid's got one to add to consent and Commissioner Burl.
Let me go ahead and read it in and then we'll, we'll add it per conditions. Other business item number seven is to consider a stipulation amendment for Coda Properties Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z one fifty-one of two thousand and four for property located on the west side of Powder Springs Road, uh, uh, and on the north side of Green Drive in Land Lots four seventy-five and four eighty-eight of the nineteenth district. The applicant's representative is present, is there anyone here opposed to other business item number seven? Let the record show there's no one opposed?
No conditions, I mean.
Okay, just approve?
Just approve per, um, the request in the other business application.
Okay, gotcha.
So is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, we need a second. Any pro, uh, discussion, call a question? Passes five to zero. Okay, Commissioner Burl? Correct, yeah.
Um, yes, I'm, John, I would like to add Z fifteen to consent.
Okay, let me go and read that one in real quick.
Well, I have some revisions to include, do you want?
Let, let him read it in first and then you can make your changes.
Yeah, read it in and then you read your conditions. Okay, rezoning case Z fifteen, Morgan House PCH LLC requests a rezoning from NRC to NRC for the purpose of a personal care home in Land Lot five eighty-eight of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Chesterfield Drive and on the east side of Canton Road. The applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z fifteen? Let the record shows no one opposed? Commissioner.
Okay, yes. I would first like to thank the Canton Road Neighbors, Marietta Canton Road Subdivision, DOT, and staff for working diligently on this, um, with the applicant and her attorney. So, um, I would like to add Z fifteen to consent with a motion to approve deletion, subject to, number one, deletion to LRC of the one point six seven acre tract for personal care home use only. Phase one site plan only, received December fifth, two thousand and nineteen, which is the existing building. Uh, Mr. Sam's letter dated January tenth, twenty twenty. Access to be from Canton Road only with improved thirty-five foot turning radius tied to phase one. Driveway to property from Canton Road shall end at parking area on Northwest Corner shown on phase two site plan dated twelve five nineteen. Chesterfield driveway to be closed slash removed upon completion of driveway to Canton Road within sixty days of BOC approval. No construction access to Chesterfield Drive. No guest or employee parking on Chesterfield Drive. Certificate of occupancy to be tied to completion of driveway to Canton Road curb cut. Landscape plan to extend length of eastern border and length of southern border where contiguous to residentially zoned property. Landscaping shall be completed before issuance of certificate of occupancy. Landscape plan to be reviewed by County Arborist and approval by District Commissioner with notice and review by Canton Road Neighbors and Marietta Canton Road Subdivision. Landscaping to be installed per LRC code to achieve one hundred percent visual screening to a height of six feet within two years. Dumpsters to be enclosed with padded lids and in parking area on west side of building. Delivery hours, seven AM to seven PM, um, Monday through Friday. Exterior lighting to be confined to subject property. No outdoor speakers and any future development to come back to BOC under other business. And staff and Planning Commission comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
We have a second? We have a second discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Okay, so I think that's consent, right? So I make a motion. I make a motion that, uh, we approve the consent agenda, I don't, I just kind of sent agenda as revised. Have a second first? Okay, now discussion.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Per my previous comments when the board approved the purpose-built student housing, I can't support Z five or SLUP one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
And I cannot support, uh, Z five nor SLUP one either.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero, uh, with the objections as noted and recorded. Okay, so now we're on to, um, contained or held cases, right, Z forty-five?
Correct. Uh, all those folks that were on consent agenda, you're free to leave, just please leave quietly because we're, uh, continuing in the hearing. And moving into the continued or held cases agenda. Res zoning case Z forty-five of twenty nineteen, WS Hotels LLC requests rezoning from LRC NGC to CRC for the purpose of a hotel and Land Lot fifty-five of the twentieth district. The property is located on the north side of Hickory Grove Road and on the south side of Hickory Grove Place. Is the applicant present? Let's record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-five of twenty nineteen? Let the record shows no one opposed, will the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Members of the board. Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Larry Bilske with Architects Construction Group, I am the applicant uh, for this prod- for this project that has been actually abandoned. What I wanted to do was take, uh, my ten minutes and, uh, go through the brief history because I think we, maybe we've got a little bit of confusion of our intentions. Uh, we had submitted an application for rezoning as described from LRC GL to CRC for the purposes of, of, of building a four-story Wood Springs Suites Extended Stay Hotel. The residential opposition was extremely strong and we withdrew that application a year ago and decided to come back and present in May of last year. And we submitted an application for a four-story Abbott Hotel, which was an, a regular hotel, uh, not extended stay. We were advised, um, and took that into consideration that we are not going to get approval for a four-story hotel, the residential community is going to oppose a building that large that has too much presence. And it wouldn't matter if it was an Embassy Suites or a Marriott Hotel. And they recommended we come up with another idea, so we withdrew that application. And I talked to, uh, Planning Commission, the planning staff, uh, met with zoning people a couple of times down on the Powder Springs Road and, uh, met with the investors in the group. And during this process, uh, on May twenty-ninth, we formally requested a post, a postponement until September so we could rethink this project and what we could do with the land. Yeah, indicating that we're, we were gonna come up with something residential or small commercial. Uh, my group that I work with is, uh, involved in assisted living, hotels, convenience stores, Q, uh, storage facilities and, uh, shopping centers. And over the course of several months, uh, actually through July, August, September, we can, I continued to ask for an extension so we could keep thinking this process through. And, uh, we ended up, uh, deciding that we were, and indicated to the, uh, uh, Planning Commission that we were going to go forward with a residentially zoned rezoning from, uh, LRC to GL two of residential zone. And, uh, after a considerable amount of time it took us, we determined that apartments just weren't gonna work there. Townhomes weren't gonna work. Uh, and what we determined was a good, a good application for that site, which is a difficult site, would be an assisted living center. And we met with, uh, several members of the community, uh, three, and, uh, proposed our idea to them and they felt that the community, the residential community, which was so opposed to the hotel, would be amenable and agreeable to that type of an approach. And we're, we're proposing a two-story. So, um, we expect to get some opposition, but, uh, when I attended the meeting last month, or the, uh, on February fifth with the Planning Commission, my intention was to tell them, this is, this is our plan. This is what we want to do and we are going to submit a formal request. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, in moving forward, we'd like to move forward with this application, a formal application for rezoning for a, uh, assisted living center under RSL supportive zoning. In the zoning, uh, ordinances, the RSL district, the RSL zoning classification is considered to be a good transition from residential to commercial. It's a good fit for us, it's a good fit for Cobb County, it's a good fit, fit for the residents. And so we are hoping that we can, we can submit that application, uh, on the next round. And as far as the, the Planning Commission's, um, decision last week on the fifth was a denial of the LRC and the, uh, GL to CRC, they denied that five to zero. We accept that. But there was no discussion as to our moving forward, we want to move forward with the rezoning application for RSL. And, uh, with the two-story facility that would, uh, have approximately eighty units. And, uh, so this is obviously not a formal application, this is a request to, that, uh, we are planning on moving forward with an application in another zoning class. And we accept the board's, uh, and the Planning Commission's, uh, decision that not to give us the rezoning for a commercial.
Okay, I'll let Commissioner Burl, uh, address this issue, okay? This is his district.
Okay. Did, do you want him to say anything else? I mean, he's got four and a half minutes if he has any.
You might want to give him some guidance here.
Okay.
I think that's what he's looking for.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
When this first came in, there was a lot of opposition to the hotel and, um, both hotels. And, um, I know you have talked to and met with, uh, my, our Planning Commissioner for this district, uh, Judy Williams several times and, and correspondence with her. You did have a meeting with a few neighbors, but not what was instructed by Planning Commission to have a community meeting with a new residential plan moving forward. You haven't filed that plan, this plan with the zone, with zoning. And I haven't seen it either.
No, that, that is correct.
We really don't have this before us to discuss today. Um, I know in the past you were, it was suggested that you could withdraw the application again for the hotel, even after it went from extended stay to another hotel.
And I, I don't mean, I thought we had done, actually done that, so. Withdrawed the application for the hotel.
No, this has been continued for eight months. And we hadn't seen a new site plan for residential. But that's what you kept saying you were gonna come up with a residential plan. And although this right here looks like a nice plan, and I know you met with three, maybe three neighbors, I think you said, um, on this plan, it wasn't the whole community that, um, that lives in that area. There's a, a large subdivision on Hickory Grove Place that, um, was part of that, should be part of that community meeting, the Bells Ferry Civic Association were part of that as well. So, um, we haven't seen anything, so, and we've been holding this for eight months for you to come back with a plan and you haven't filed anything. You've just met with three neighbors, so the, the suggestion or recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny this because it's been held for eight months. And you haven't done what we, what you were asked to do by Planning Commission, um, I, I was gonna recommend the same, or make a motion for the same thing today. The, the issue with, with that is, this could be a good plan and could be a good fit and could be appropriate. And you might get support from the neighborhoods around there and, and the community. But until, um, it comes before us and is filed at zoning and we have a community meeting, we don't know that. If we deny this today, the issue is gonna be, he's gonna have to wait a year to come back and something else may go there. You know, that nobody wants there either, so, um, John, could we, or John and Bill, could we, um, see if he's agreeable to withdrawing Z forty-five and come back with this, file this plan and see where that goes?
Could just withdraw without prejudice, right? That's, that's the appropriate, that'd be the appropriate motion, right?
There, there is one problem with this, uh, withdrawing it, Mr. Chairman, is they withdrew it, um, within the last year already, one time.
Okay.
So the way our code reads is, is if you withdraw twice within a one-year period, then you're prejudiced for a year. So it's the same as being denied.
That's kinda like our hands are tied then.
Right, but John, um, the, the way it works with withdrawal, if you were, if a zoning is denied, you cannot come back and apply for the same thing within a year. If you apply for something different, it's, it's a totally different story, I mean, if we, if, if we were to deny a zoning, say somebody wants to go to LRO. My understanding is if we deny LRO, they can't come back and ask for the same thing. But they can ask for something different. We don't, we don't restrict the entire property, do we?
Yes.
We do.
I'm asking John.
Okay, well, they can't come back.
They, they can come back within six months for a lower category than what they asked for. So they're asking for CRC right now, so they can't come back in six months for a lower category, if you deny.
Right, which an RSL would be a lower category than CRC.
Correct.
Correct? So if it's denied, they can still come back in six months with this plan that they're now proposing RSL. So it, the withdrawing and all that other stuff doesn't matter because, like you said, RSL is a lower category than CRC, so they can come back in six months under the normal rules.
Okay, so you understand what we're doing here?
Yes, unfortunately.
You're actually giving, well, you, you've gained six months.
I, I understand.
Okay, so you might want to take the gift that's given, given the circumstance we're in right now, so. If she makes the motion to deny, all right?
No, I understand.
Then you'll be allowed within six months to come back with a lower category and RSL fits that lower category, you heard that discussion here, and we're on tape.
Okay, and even if it's a different ownership, is it WSL, it's? It, it doesn't matter for ownership. Okay. All right.
So it's not tied to this parcel?
It's tied to the parcel, but not ownership.
Not to the owner.
But I mean, he can still come back as, as long as it's, uh, less.
Yeah, a lower category.
Six, six months. Okay, so I'll wait your motion, Commissioner.
Okay, um, I make a motion to deny Z forty-five without prejudice. Go on with prejudice?
Just deny.
Just deny.
Okay, I make a motion to deny. I make a motion to deny Z45. And can I add some guidance here for the applicant?
I wouldn't go there.
They just take their own little counsel for that.
You understand what you have to do.
We can come back in six months. We'll take that six months and get the more residential.
You're going to have to file a whole new application, isn't it?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Well, of course.
For this proposal, for RSL.
Now, John, they can file before six months, it just can't be heard before six months.
That's correct, it's really like a four or five month time.
Right, because it normally takes 90 to 120 days for staff to go through an application. So if you're at this point, you've heard Commissioner Burl talk about she wants a community meeting. So during that six-month period, we just can't hear it for six months. So you have six months to do all this stuff that Commissioner Burl said she wants done. So then when you come in front of this board again, you're going to have a package that she's seen, the community's seen, staff's seen. So don't wait six months and then file.
Got you.
Yeah, because it's going to take a few months to get it on the calendar.
Okay.
If he files tomorrow, it won't be heard till May?
Well, no, it can't be heard this month.
Oh, that's right.
Till whatever the eighth month is of the year.
Okay, yeah.
Unless you're using a different calendar.
Just go ahead and file it anytime.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny, we have a second, end of discussion, call the question, pass the five to zero. See you in the future.
Okay, rezoning case Z71 of 2019, Trayton Homes LLC, request a rezoning from R20 and R15 to RSL for the purpose of non-supportive residential senior living community in landlots 524 and 525 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Sandy Plains Road, west of Ebenezer Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z71 of 2019? Please raise your hands. That direction, there's no one opposed.
So you got the memo about same color tie, I appreciate this.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Hope it helps.
Encourages you.
Yes.
But I wouldn't take that too far.
Just hope it helps. Thank you.
All right, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant Trayton Homes in this application for rezoning. This is almost nine and a half acres, it's 9.45 acres, and you heard this in December, so it's been a couple of months. I just want to highlight this proposal for rezoning, this property from R20 to residential senior living RSL. The, a couple of things I want to highlight also for you is if you look to the overhead with the aerial of the zoning categories and uses of the property, you see the properties highlighted, the 9.45 acres located there, right at, kind of at the intersection of Ebenezer Road and Sandy Plains Road. What you'll note, though, is you do see the red, which is PSC and NS, Planned Shopping Center and Neighborhood Shopping, those are older retail categories that are part of a activity center that extends through to, to this property. Adjacent to this property to the south on Sandy Plains is a non-residential use, it's Sandy Plains Baptist Church, which owns the property, all the way adjacent to us. In addition, across the street, that is across Sandy Plains, where you see property, to note it also is R20, that however, is non-residential. Again, that's comprised of post office and church uses, and so it likewise is non-residential property, even though zoned R20. Additionally, as you continue north on Sandy Plains along the frontage on the other side of Ebenezer, you again see categories for office and low-rise office that are likewise non-residential uses. So this property is in a position in which it's right at the edge of an activity center where additional property is located across the street and adjacent to it on either side are non-residential uses, even though zoned residential. So from a land use planning standpoint, we believe residential senior living and age-restricted community is very much entirely appropriate at this location as proposed by Trayton Homes. Turning to the site plan itself, I want to highlight a couple of things for you as part of this site plan and our proposal to you.
Now turning to the specific property, here again is the 9.45 acres, Ebenezer Road and its intersection at Sandy Plains Road, which is a signalized intersection, and this is the Cary Creek subdivision, an older R15 subdivision that surrounds this property. And this is the Sandy Plains Baptist Church property here adjacent to us. What we have proposed is a maximum of 31 homes, which is a reduction from the initial 33 homes. In addition, I want to point out that we have met with these adjacent neighbors here specifically, one of whom is the HOA leader for Cary Creek adjacent to us. One of the things that we were able to do through some, this was prior to the Planning Commission in December, was expand, actually double the size of that buffer to those adjacent residents, so that the first 20 feet of that buffer is an undisturbed buffer because there is a, somewhat of a stand of trees right through here, so that we, those can be protected. So we have a 20-foot undisturbed buffer followed by another 20 feet of landscape buffer to enhance that as well from a visual standpoint, so that in total, it's a 40-foot buffer adjacent to those existing homes, which was very much appreciated by them, and we had great conversations with those neighbors and went very well. We also have stipulations as requested by Sandy Plains Baptist Church to provide fencing along this property line for their benefit, that will help with pedestrian traffic as well as set off the community park area that we have planned for here as a community gathering spot for the proposed residents. Lastly, we are proposing access on Ebenezer Road. This access on Ebenezer Road does have a full, full left-hand turn lane that will be installed. This property here is actually Cobb County additional right-of-way, as pointed out to us by DOT, and that can be coordinated to provide for what we believe is a, a safe entrance and access to this proposed development. If you recall, previously, there had been discussion and we had proposed a right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains Road, and there was some discussion back and forth with DOT about that. Ultimately, what DOT has recommended per their stated recommendations, their recommendations as stated are a preference for the right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains Road, but a proposed access on Ebenezer with the full left-hand turn lane is acceptable. And that's quoting their actual comments and recommendations. And so we have proposed that access location from that standpoint.
Couple of things in this specific location, because there had been that discussion about access and about, well, just even potentially what that means from an RSL standpoint with 31 homes versus how it's currently zoned. It is currently zoned R20, which would allow for 17 homes, single-family traditional homes surrounded by R15. So if this was developed at R20 or R15, you would have somewhere between 17 and 20 homes, 16 and 20 homes depending, single-family homes that would produce far more vehicle trips during peak hours, during the morning times when the school is, is opening, which is on Ebenezer, it would produce far more trips at this location than the 31 proposed age-restricted homes. Traffic engineers, by rule of thumb, will tell you that traffic statistics, as it relates to age-restricted homes and communities, produce a third of the traffic impact of a single-family development of similar size. And that translates in terms of this project, that a single-family neighborhood of 10 or 12 homes, 10 homes really, would produce the same traffic as what we're producing. So if you compare what can be done under the existing zoning versus what we're proposing, you can very much see that what's being proposed as an age-restricted community has far less traffic impact than a single-family neighborhood. The traffic statistics show that and bear that out. And the, the one thing I would ask that you consider when you consider traffic impact of what we are proposing and what Trayton Homes is proposing here in this location is that 31 homes of age-restricted community doesn't mean, and I don't propose to say, that nobody that lives in this, that would live in this community drives or goes to work. That's not true. There's certainly some people who move into an age-restricted community who still work. The difference is that not everybody does. In a single-family neighborhood, everybody's working. It's traditionally, it's two-income families or at least one-income family with children. There's school trips in the morning as well as work trips in the morning. With an age-restricted community, what happens from a traffic generation standpoint is that you don't have the school-generated traffic in the morning, and you don't have nearly the number of work-generated trips in the morning, and the same goes for the afternoon, and that's the difference. The difference is that statistically speaking, it's only one out of three at most are working in an age-restricted community and have made that decision as a life and quality of life decision. For most, it's after their work or their work is winding down that they want to make that choice and decision. So that's why that, those numbers and what initially may seem odd, it's really not. That's why the traffic generation and trip generation and traffic engineers will tell you that a age-restricted community is a third of the impact of a similar single-family community. And that bears that out in each and every case. Also, do want to provide you the additional information that both staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application. And again, we believe that this property, these longtime owners that have owned this property, that sold the adjacent property to develop Cary Creek, and then they wanted to stay there throughout, which is an older subdivision, but they wanted to stay there until they were ready to sell, come to you with what we think is a very much well-thought-out plan and one that we've worked very, very diligently on to accommodate all of the concerns and issues that have been made note to us by community members, both in and surrounding this property. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Representatives of Trayton Homes are here to answer any questions that you may have, and we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl. Nope.
This is an RSL.
That's.
That's why I was laughing.
Um, yes. Thank you. I'm going to call, before I ask you anything, Kevin, I'm going to call up Amy Diaz and/or Drew Ressler with DOT.
Thank you.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning.
You submitted some revised comments for this, and we had talked a lot about this. I'm in this area almost daily, and I have major concerns with full access on Ebenezer. We have, we have intersections all over the county where you have a right-turn lane and a yield sign for oncoming traffic and U-turn movement. Piedmont and Sandy Plains in front of Sprayberry High School is one that I'm very familiar with. And the reason I'm, or the, the recommendation from DOT and from me for the right-in, right-out only on Sandy Plains is, I think, more appropriate for this area with the traffic concerns and Sandy Plains being a major arterial road as opposed to Ebenezer. Ebenezer is very heavily traveled with the school, elementary school right down the street. And my concern with turning left from Sandy Plains onto Ebenezer and jumping in a left-turn lane almost immediately is an accident waiting to happen. I, I want to hear DOT's thoughts on your preference and recommendation on right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains and a right-out only on Ebenezer with a gate to prevent the left turn in.
All right. To, just to clarify, the revised recommendations are from, I believe it's November 27th, so they have not been revised since the last time this was discussed. So this is, this is still the DOT recommendations from the last hearing.
Okay.
We do prefer, as was stated by the applicant, we do prefer the right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains Road. It would require U-turns at two signalized intersections, that they do have left-turn protection at those intersections, so that is why we would recommend that as the preferable option. However, the Ebenezer access with a left-turn lane in is deemed deceptible by DOT. If there is a right-turn access that is pursued, then we were okay with an exit only onto, onto Ebenezer Road. So we did not want full movement at both for the development. At that point, a concern was raised that even with, with geometric design, that we would still have people attempt to enter that, and we discussed the, the gate to hold people back from entering that, that exit.
Okay, and there is, just a minute. There is a right-turn lane, what we just finished, we just completed the median project at, from Ken Jack to Ebenezer.
Correct.
And there is a, going south on Ebenezer, there is, it is signalized, but there is a right-turn lane onto Sandy Plains.
Correct.
So a right turn out of this would just connect to that to turn right with a yield sign for any oncoming traffic, if it was a right on red, and any U-turn at the signal at Ebenezer. And there's also a signal at Post Oak Street.
Correct. One of the reasons why the Ebenezer connection is not most ideal is because it does not meet our minimum spacing from a signalized intersection. So you, you raised some concern about people turning left, and we understand that we did do a lot of observations from the initial submission and have watched the queuing here, and we believe that it will operate successfully the way that they've proposed it on Ebenezer. But that an exit only would also be, be fine in the same respect.
Okay. And that Ebenezer is during school, traffic is really backed up all the way north and south on Ebenezer. It's, um, it's, it's dangerous, we've had, had police out there. So, okay.
Commissioner, I have a question.
Amy, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, because I don't think this is what we discussed in December. So you're saying, I mean, I know you want the, the right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains.
Yes.
But you're saying, because you have some right-of-way, that you would be okay with a left turn in off of Ebenezer?
Well, it's a full-movement driveway. If they, if they do the secondary selection, which is acceptable to us but not a preferred, then it would be a full-movement access onto Ebenezer, but it also includes a left-turn-only lane in that they are able to put in because we have additional right-of-way on the other side of the road.
Right, and so with that, if we were to go to that direction, along with the right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains?
If they do the right-in, right-out on Sandy Plains, we don't recommend an entrance onto, off of Ebenezer, we recommend only the exit.
Okay, but I mean, it just seems to me that if you're okay with the left turn off of Ebenezer, and the concerns that both the chairman and I expressed about the U-turns from Sandy Plains, if it's okay to do the left-in off of Ebenezer, why not do both? Because then anybody coming, I guess, north on Sandy Plains wouldn't have to do U-turn.
Correct.
I mean, if you're telling me it's okay because of the right-of-way, why not do both? Because if there's going to be a lot of traffic on Ebenezer, then, all right, they might have to do a U-turn, but it seems to me that that alleviates the requirement every single time coming north on Sandy Plains to have to do a U-turn to get in.
With the residential development, we, we try to look at whether or not it's a short connector road that will bypass a signal, which this would be. If you make it full movement on both, then you will introduce some people that take that connection roadway and avoid the signal.
But you're not bypassing the signal. You've still got to wait for the signal before you can make a left turn on Ebenezer to make that left turn into the development.
If you came in on Ebenezer and then exited onto Sandy Plains.
Right, so I mean, I, I guess I.
It'd be a cut-through. It would be a cut-through.
It would, it'd be a, a short connecting.
If they could enter off of Ebenezer.
Right, but you can alleviate that, we talked about with the gate, that only opens for the residents. I mean, if the gate was far enough, far enough in, so it wasn't going to, you know, get people backed up on Ebenezer trying to turn in.
But you just said, allow both.
That hadn't been asked. If, if there is a gate there for entrance only, then we have to. That hadn't been asked. If there is a gate there for entrance-only, then we have to look at where that gate placement is opposed to the road.
No, I understand that, because obviously you don't want the gate too close to the road, because then people would be backing up on the road. But my question was more centered on the fact that I thought, I heard you saying that you were okay with left-turns off of Ebenezer, which was kind of where we had a lot of discussions in December, because I know the chairman and I both had issues with having to come up Sandy Plains and do the U-turn, and it seemed that would alleviate it, because in December, I don't remember you saying that you were okay with that.
Yeah, what I, what I meant to say, or I hopefully did say, is that where the right-turn off of Sandy Plains is preferred, that the other one is also acceptable.
Well, you know...
If there is a request to look at both as full movement, but one completely controlled by a gate, then that's certainly something we can look at. It hasn't been an option we've asked to explore.
If the board directs it, it'll be more than looked at, all right? And the other part is, is what Kevin said here, these are 55, no, there aren't gonna be that many people trying to get in and out of that development.
During school times?
Yeah, so I understand your concern, but if we gotta step back here and look at the reasonable approach here to this thing here, we have the perfect solution. You came up with it. We have a right-in, right-out, all right, and we have a left-in, left-out, right-in off of Ebenezer, right-out only, and a left-turn lane. It takes care of all that traffic backup, and we don't have people my age trying to octopflugerrons in intersections.
Can you spell that?
Well, it's a technical term for people my age.
You're older than 55.
So...
Okay.
I think that if you put, Commissioner, if you put that in there, you're gonna make everybody happy here, you know, in the development, and it's something that I can support.
If the applicant is... Full access, you're saying a left-turn out on Sandy, on Ebenezer?
No, a right-out only, but the left-turn lane will take care of traffic coming down Sandy Plains from either direction, okay? And if they want to, if they want to turn into Ebenezer, all right?
But they really don't need to?
Right.
They really don't need to, they can use the right-in, but more importantly, for the people going north on Sandy Plains, which are the ones that we all talked about in December, they will now be able to make a left-turn with the light onto Ebenezer and make a left-turn into the neighborhood and not have to do a U-turn.
Exactly.
This would sound to be something that...
It almost seems like you've kind of come up with the compromise that we were looking for in December. But, and that's why I was asking, because I wasn't sure that that's what you were suggesting. I'm not really sure why we couldn't do that.
If the applicant is amenable to one entrance being gate-controlled for full access and one not, I mean, or the other one could be as well, I suppose, then that would certainly be something we'd be willing to entertain.
Well, that would take care of the cut-through issue, all right? And where's Mr. Moore? Help us out here. You're close.
I have some questions for Kevin.
Okay, but I just want to make sure about, because I think we're coming closer to a solution to amenable the issues.
No, we would be agreeable to those solutions.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That's the easiest way for me to say it. We're agreeable to those solutions.
All right, thank you.
However the board directs us, then that's what we will do.
Well, I don't, I'm not recommending the left-turn in off of Ebenezer. It's too dangerous, left-turn in. I'm recommending the right-in, right-out only on Sandy Plains, a right-out only on Ebenezer with a gate to prevent a left-turn in, because you're gonna add, that's gonna be a cut-through. If it's not just an exit, it's gonna be a cut-through, and people are gonna be cutting through this neighborhood to come out on Sandy Plains and bypass the signal.
Not with a gate.
Uh, but y'all are saying to let them turn left in.
All right.
You won't have a gate.
It's the same entrance. It's a gated entrance now, that's all.
And we're, if that's the solution that the board reaches, we're agreeable to the proposal.
Are you agreeable to a right-in, right-out only on Sandy Plains, a right-out only with a turn, right-turn lane on Ebenezer, and a gate to prevent a left-turn in and a right-turn in, an exit-only on Ebenezer?
Yes, we're agreeable to that proposal, and we're also agreeable to the proposal, as I understand it, also has been discussed, and that would be the access on Ebenezer is just gated, so that there is a left-turn in off of Ebenezer, but it is gated. There's plenty of room to do that, so we're agreeable to both.
So it's a right-out and a left-in?
Right, but gated.
But it can't, you can't turn right in?
Right, and that would have the left-turn lane, yes, but we're agreeable to that as well.
I still think it's dangerous.
Well...
What are the other two commissioners? They're going with these two.
That's fine.
If there's enough room to do a left-turn in with a gate, I could be amenable to it.
There is.
Just looking at the roadway, it looks as if someone's trying to make a left into Ebenezer. They could be trying to make a left when there's traffic stacked up going to the intersection, so they would have to be let through, which seems to be a challenge on top of waiting for a gate to open. But if somehow they're able to get through that middle turn lane and then queue in the property and not be queuing off of Ebenezer.
There is sufficient room.
Worthwhile.
So would the gate, would the residents have a code or something to get in the gate?
Yes, it would be a normal gated system at that location.
Okay, so it would have to be further back to get the car off the road.
There's, there's DOT...
Okay, so that could all be addressed in plan review.
Commissioner Burrow, I can tell you, having just visited my mom's community where she lives in Florida, she has a little sticker on the windshield. She drives up to the gate, the thing reads the RFD, it opens automatically. She doesn't have to get a card out. She doesn't have to punch in a code. It just automatically opens because it recognizes the car.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that it would be for the residents only, and there would be no right-turn in to cut through.
Correct.
Okay, does a right-turn lane, where does a right-turn lane start on this property for the new intersection?
It's beyond where this access point would be. If you're looking at your overhead, it's, you can see the two little right-hand turn lane arrows on Ebenezer, which take it past our entrance.
Okay, and there's a left-turn lane that they'd be able to jump in? That's still, that's still close, y'all.
I agree, I mean, Commissioner Burrow, I agree with you.
That's the road median.
I'm not saying the other option isn't possible, but I hear your concerns.
Well, I guess my concern is, is while, while you're saying this is gonna be an RSL and it's gonna actually reduce traffic, if you do the, using DOT calculations, if it was 17 homes under the current designation, that would be 170 traffic trips. Even with the RSL supposedly having less traffic trips, because we're almost doubling the number of homes, we're up to about 186 car trips. So actually, this development is gonna produce more car trips than if it was developed as zoned. Just another thing, and then also just looking at the road, this is striped double-yellow, Ebenezer it looks like, which means do not cross. So I'm not sure how we can sit there and put in a left-turn lane when we've got it striped for quite a distance for no passing. Also, I don't support the 10 feet between the homes.
The left-turn lane has been discussed with traffic operations, and certainly striping and how that would be, the guidance would be done, would be something that would have to be worked out.
You can modify it?
Yes, that, that striping would be modified as part of the condition of the left-turn lane.
Okay, so, um, wow. If they didn't have the variance for the 15 feet, I mean, for 10 feet, could you support the right-turn out and no left-in?
I mean, it would also then reduce the homes, yes.
Because if they, if they went down to 28 lots, they would, wouldn't need the variance for the 10 feet. That's three lots, from what they're asking for.
But then if we're talking about private gates and everything, will 28 homes be able to support that? Because these are private roads.
Kevin?
And this also, we need to make sure these are included in the covenants, because many times these RSLs aren't letting the individuals know that purchase in them that they are private roads and detention ponds, and then it becomes a surprise when they have to pay for them.
Are these private roads in your stip letter?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's gonna be their sale.
It would be included within the covenants, and certainly this development in the homeowners and the type of age-restricted community, that's typical for age-restricted communities, and it's an expectation that homeowner association dues or more, because it's a much stronger association. It takes care of roads, yards, and so forth, and landscape maintenance. So that's a expectation for the homebuyer, and so that is not something that's an issue from our standpoint, as far as ensuring those are part of the covenants, but...
You don't support it.
Commissioner Gamble brings up a good point about 30 homes having to support that infrastructure.
Almost, I'm trying to think of, I can't think offhand an RSL that is not private streets with a homeowners' association and the expectation. That's because it's a special type of community where the homebuyer is coming in and knows that, and that's part of it, so they carry those very much so, and a lot, most of our RSLs, in fact, are about this number, you know, somewhere between 30 and 50.
There wouldn't be a significant addition of dues each month for this to become a gated community versus what it would be without it being a gated community.
There's a, yes, there's some increase that would accomplish, that would need to accommodate that, but not much. They're already paying a good number for their HOA dues, and they can accommodate that for gates and private streets very much so. Like I said, it's the expect, it's all about expectations and what you're used to and what you're buying into. So it's perfectly acceptable for an age-restricted community to have, you know, higher HOA dues than I would want, but I don't want to live in an age-restricted community at this point in time, but they do. That's that homebuyer.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve Z-71, subject to deletion to RSL, non-supportive. Stip letters from Kevin Moore dated November 26, December 3, 2019, and February 12, 2020. Maximum of 31 lots. Email from Amy Diaz of DOT dated February 13, and, um... Recommendation for right-in, right-out only on Sandy Plains, right-out, right-out and left-turn in with gate on Ebenezer as acceptable. Planning commission comments from December 3, not otherwise in conflict. Staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Final site plan to be approved by district commissioner showing access on Sandy Plains and Ebenezer, because we don't have the site plan showing what we're discussing today. And with the, with the gate on Ebenezer, and where applicable, these revised steps override stipulations and letters and comments.
All right, any other discussion? Call a question. Pass is 41, Commissioner Gamble, opposition. And with that, let's take a 10-minute break. Commissioner Cupid would like to add something to consent.
Yes, I believe the applicant is amenable to adding Z eighteen back to consent.
Oh, wonderful.
With the rental restriction, John.
Okay, so let me go and read back in real quick. Resoning case Z eighteen, the Revive Land Group LLC requests rezoning from LI to R eight for the purpose of townhomes and landlot thirty-four and thirty-five of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Old Powder Springs Road, west of Dunn Road. The planning, the planning commission recommends approval to the R eight zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on January twenty-four, twenty twenty. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions for Mr. Kevin Moore dated February four, twenty twenty, and received at the February fifth, twenty twenty planning commission zoning hearing, not otherwise in conflict. Number three, no one person or entity may own, control or manage more than five percent of the units at any one time after the initial sale of the units. Number four, applicant to remove all existing curb cuts on Old Powder Springs Road, including the curb cut at the end of the road, install curb gutter and sidewalk in those areas, and staff comments or recommendations that otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z eighteen? The record shows no one opposed.
Okay, and I'd like to add the following stipulations, that the rental cap is to be limited to ten percent, and that the district commissioner is to approve landscaping and building architecture and elevations. And also to strike PC stipulation number thirty.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now on to Z seventy-three.
Resoning case Z seventy-three of twenty nineteen, Rebecca T. Resch and Warren William Resch the third, requests rezoning from R eighty to RR for the purpose of a single family subdivision, maximum of three lots, and landlot one sixty-six of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Castile Road, north of Luther Ward Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z seventy-three? Please raise your hands. And left the record show there's eleven people here opposed to rezoning case Z seventy-three. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Please, Kevin.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owners and applicants. Mr. Warren Resch and Ms. Rebecca Resch, in this application for rezoning that you first heard in December and it was held over to this hearing. And again, just want to kind of remind the commission of a couple of highlights and points about this rezoning application. This property is currently zoned R eighty. It's located at the intersection of Castile Road and Luther Ward Road. And as shown on your screen, as you are very familiar, you know, across Luther Ward Road is the middle school and school complex for Lovingood and Hill Grove. It's also in close proximity, it is still elementary. So it's a very large school district site. In addition, what we had proposed previously and what had been submitted previously was a rezoning to the R forty zoning category. Since that time, there has been a revised site plan submitted, as well as a stipulation letter dated February twelfth, where we have amended that application to seek rezoning to the RR or rural residential category per that February twelfth site plan. Couple of things, turning to the site plan now, that I want to point out. And let me go through those lots for you, but it's for a total of three homes or three home sites, three lots on this six-point-six-eight or six-seven acre site. And we walk you through kind of what we're proposing at this juncture and why.
Again, this is the rectangular square piece of property here. Luther Ward Road is on your bottom, Castile Road on the right-hand side of this site plan. You have a lot here which has been denoted in the site in the stipulation letters as the Castile Road Lot. Is lot, this is one. This larger lot is the second lot here, which has the existing house and driveway and accommodates that entire piece. And then the third lot is located here exclusively on Luther Ward Road. Couple of things. These two lots, the one with the house and also the rear lot, are in excess of two acres each. That is, they are in excess of eighty thousand square feet and would be compliant even under the existing R eighty standards. We have also increased this lot and have denoted as such in the stipulation letter, that this lot is a minimum of fifty thousand square feet, which is how we have shown it. The reason for this is we have an existing house that we would, do not want to destroy. We don't want to destroy its value. We do want to maintain and increase and protect that value of this house. And in doing so, this area here is really the front yard of that house. And so from an arrangement standpoint with a house located here, this house here and this house here, they all, each lot maintains viable backyard, viables front yard. If we were to increase this lot to more than eighty thousand square feet, you end up with somebody's lot and somebody's front yard. And that's really the reason behind this, is that we want to maintain the integrity of this home, as well as be able to subdivide for only two additional lots. And please keep in mind, when this was originally proposed and submitted, it was submitted for four total homes. And now that is now only three. But with RR, rural residential, it is completely consistent with your land use plan. It's also important to note, for this six-point-six acres, what you end up with is an average lot size of two-point-two acres or more. You end up with a density of point four-five homes per acre. Each of those components are entirely consistent with the VLDR, Very Low Density Residential Land Use Map designation for this particular area. We are talking about three homes and rural residential as a category. I can state that in twenty-three years of doing zoning and land use, I've never represented a client requesting rural residential. It is a category we don't see very much, but it's entirely appropriate here in this area along Castile Road and at the intersection of Luther Ward Road. It is a rural residential type of area. If I asked you to drive through there and describe it for me, the two words that you would say are rural and residential. That's exactly what you would call this particular area.
In addition, we have provided for stipulations that require minimum setbacks for what I denominated as or identified as the Castile Road Lot. That's the fifty thousand, minimum fifty thousand square foot lot, having a front setback of sixty feet, rear setback of fifty, and side setbacks of twenty-five, which are likewise consistent with the rural standards and well, as well as with the standards and frontages along this entire section of Castile Road, which varies. Castile Road is not simply the Five Family Farms. It is a major component and a component of Castile Road, but it's not the only one. In addition, you have the school districts and the schools that are present here. You have a variety of other homes that are built on R thirty, R twenty and R eighty types of lots. And the area is largely residential in nature and largely rural residential in nature, which is exactly what we are proposing on behalf of the Resches here today. In addition, we do note that the sanitary sewer for this is actually going to be septic tank for these, which is appropriate for the lots, which will also be subject certainly to the Cobb County Health Department and all of their rules and regulations for septic. So you can only get one if the Health Department signs off and you've provided, which we have, done appropriate soil studies to determine that that would be appropriate in this location as well. Again, we are proposing a zoning category of rural residential, which does not require variances, which is entirely consistent with the land use plan and entirely consistent with the nature of the entire area. We very much believe that this rezoning application, when viewed through the lens of appropriate land use and appropriate zoning principles, is entirely consistent with those zoning principles and land use principles. And we believe that very strongly. We have, just so you know, we have submitted this, at this point, a constitutional challenge that's been submitted to your clerk and to your county attorney as well, because that had not been made part of the record prior. So I just want to bring that to your attention as I'm required, but to do at this point in time. With that, I'm here to answer any questions and other representatives of the, Mr. Resch and Mrs. Resch are available as well. And again, we urge and respectfully request your rezoning of this property to the rural residential category, which we believe is completely and utterly consistent and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those in opposition?
Good morning, Commissioners.
One second, please. Is there anyone else in support that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, Mr. Paulson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Paul Paulson. I'm a forty-four year resident of Castile Road. We have many reasons why we don't want to see this proposal be approved, but you've heard them all before and I won't bore you with them again. But there is another one that came to our attention just in the last few days. It involved, you heard Mr. Moore talk about this will, this property will require a septic system. And it brought, when I heard that, he sent a letter out that I was copied on, I think Thursday or Friday. And it brought back memories of nineteen ninety-nine, when I acted as a developer for the twenty-five acres that we bought to stop a forty-four home subdivision in the middle of our community, Five Families Farm. I had to go through the entire site plan review process, going through, I think it's eight different departments. And the biggest problem that we had was when we confronted the sewage department. They, at the time, there was great controversy about septic systems. They did not like septic systems. Or they kept saying leaky septic systems are prone to catastrophic failure because of lack of maintenance. How many people maintain their septic systems? There was talk to really increase the size of lots that would require it, or even eliminate it altogether. They were talking about. Well, it seems that, I recall at that time, they had passed an ordinance, you guys had, I don't think any of you were on the board, you weren't at the time, restricting septic systems to R eighty zoning. This was a public health issue, to make sure that any problems would be contained in a large lot. You would not have a small one. So I thought that was true. So I went and looked it up. And sure enough, section one twenty-two, one fifty-three, wastewater systems of the Cobb County Code, first of all, it says that all sewage shall be connected to the county wastewater system when sewer is available. There is no sewer available here on Castile Road. If not, there are exceptions, really just one. Septic tanks, septic tanks shall be allowed on residential lot sizes of at least eighty thousand square feet, that's about two acres, providing sections one twenty-two thirty, one twenty-two one thirty, and sections one twenty-two two forty-two or met. I've further looked up what section one twenty-two one thirty was, and it deals with non-residential private wastewater minimum requirements. Section one twenty-two one forty-two involves what they call lot size, the specification for all septic tanks, twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine square feet is served by public water, and at least forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is served by private water. Then it denotes, lot size refers here to the area of soil suitable for onsite sewer disposal. So within that eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size that's allowed for a septic system, you must have at least, there is public water here, twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine square feet of perccable soil available for your system. So maybe you, Mr., the applicant might have felt that if he got his zoning application approved, he would just get a variance to take care of this. Well, this is a sensitive area. And I have a topographical map here that, basically, there's a creek, constantly flowing creek. creek, there are actually fish living in it, that separates my property from my neighbor's property. And the headwaters of this starts at a spring that emerges out of the ground, or it did on Mr., on the applicant's property. Since the county widened, put in a turn lane, and put in sidewalks, it no longer flows over there on that side of the road. Instead, there's a culvert that comes under the road, and then it appears about 30 feet into Mr. Palmer's property.
Okay, this is Castile Road, right here. And this is approximately the site that Mr. Moore refers to as the Castile Road Lot. It's 58,000 acres, significantly less than 80,000. This is the creek that runs through our property, that eventually empties into Mud Creek, which then flows into the Chattahoochee River and eventually the Gulf of Mexico. Right now, the creek appears out of the ground from, since the construction by the county, about 30 feet from the road on this side. But the actual spring site, and I've lived there since 1976, was over here, and there was always water there before. That's where it emerges. This is a hilly area up here where he wants to build. So basically, if you were to amend this minimum 80,000 square foot requirement for a septic system in such a sensitive site, it would be a drastic environmental disrespect because this is, this is a potential. They talk about leaky septic systems, and they do leak. And they also are prone to what's called point source pollution. There's an organization called the Chattahoochee River Keepers that are very concerned about such things. And we have alerted them to this issue. So as far as not having, this is your own law about the 80,000 square feet, and he only has, has 50,000 square feet. We feel that it'd be totally inappropriate to approve it under these conditions. Thank you.
We have felt that this is a spot zoning issue, and that's been defined as a process of sinking down a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of the other owners, certainly us. But in this case, with a water issue, you have many, many people who'd be affected by this one zoning change, if it's allowed to be done with less than the minimum code required, 80,000 square foot septic system. So, and we do also, we have preserved our constitutional right to challenge it, and I'd also like to do that for the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else would like to speak in opposition, you have three minutes.
How are you? I'm Kathy Stettler. I live at 942. And basically, the, the point that I want to bring up is about the spot zoning, and I'm still learning a lot about this. I've had a chance to talk with a couple of you about it. But the rural residential zoning is not with the community, and when, it's always referred to as five family farms. We're just a small part. There's other parts of that community that isn't just five family farms, that just putting the RR zoning strictly on that piece of property, that to me, at the reading that I did, that's what spot zoning is. And i- in my mind, it shows favoritism. And we're coming here as a collective of 11 of us that can show up and take time off from work and take time off from our jobs to show you that our community is very united, that we want to maintain the R-80 zoning. And that's, that's it. I mean, we just, they've worked very hard to get it, and in six years that we've lived there, we, we moved there because of that, you know, what, what we get the benefit from it. So as a community and as a collective, we want to keep the R-80.
Good.
I did that in like a minute.
Any others in opposition? Okay, seen none. Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like to call Tim Davidson up, but I understand he stepped out for a moment.
Let me see.
I want to ask, um, septic.
Why would he step out?
He got a phone call.
Well.
There he is. They prayed with the other way.
Tim, can I call you to the, up to the podium, please?
Yes, Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water System.
Hi, Tim. Thank you. Did you hear Mr. Paulson's comments regarding septic?
I did.
Can you please share your sights on that?
I can't address everything he stated as far as past opinions towards septic systems and so forth. But I will say my comments were written, I think, on the original site plans. I referenced tracks two, three, and four. So the site plan's changed, I think, once or twice since. But I also referenced code Section 122-130A, which addresses new residential subdivisions, which states that for new residential subdivisions where sewer is available by gravity, all lots under 80,000 square feet are to connect to sewer.
But there's no sewer here.
But there's no sewer here. So what is the minimum lot size requirement to have septic?
If, if it's determined that sewer's not available by someone because sewer is, can be reached by gravity, it's obviously pretty far away. So, well, I'll just say that there, we see subdivisions all the time that have to acquire one or two or three easements to get to sewer. So it's, it's, it's not my place to determine whether that's unreasonable or not.
But doesn't the public health department have to approve the septic tank?
Yes, if it's determined that sewer's not available, then the health department, I'd hate to speak for them, but my, I believe they need half acre of usable soil. So I think they take out like stream buffers, the footprint of the house, things like that.
But don't they have to be on a two-acre lot?
If, if sewer's not available, then it's, it's a half acre lot, but the health department needs a half acre of usable soil.
So.
The statute.
Okay, we're talking two different issues. If, if somebody just goes out, if, if there's an existing lot, if somebody goes out and buys a lot and wants to build a house, and sewer is some distance away after easements, the code doesn't treat them like developers where they have to build a sewer outfall. They can use a septic tank, but they talk to the health department, they, again, the health department generally wants a half acre of usable soil. The code I referenced was for new subdivisions. Subdivision's different than just going out and buying an individual lot. Subdivision, you're developing something, so you may have to build a sewer outfall. So again, I reference subdivisions. This is being subdivided. So this seems to fall under 122-130A.
What, that this is a new subdivision with three houses?
Definition of subdivision, as I read in the code, is dividing a lot into two, a single lot into two or more lots. That's the definition of subdivision.
This isn't, this isn't a single lot. Yeah.
But a subdivision becomes two or more.
Yeah, you know, we're parsing it here. What's, what, where's the code? What does the code say about, about the septic tanks?
That would be a water and sewer question.
What does the, what does the code say about the septic tank?
That's a water and sewer question.
If it's 80,000 square feet, you have to have 80,000 square feet, right? The code, the code that Mr. Paulson read, is that in the county code?
It's in the county code, but it's not in the zoning code. It's in the water and sewer code.
No, is it in the county code? All right?
Mr. Chairman, I cannot answer that question because that's.
Well, but the county attorney can.
Okay.
So we, we have to look at that, but I, I don't have, it was still, if we're looking at a subdividing the lot, it comes under a different code section.
Now, let's, let's start with the 80,000 square feet question. What Mr. Paulson said, is that in the county code?
We have to look at that, sir.
The second thing is, is that we're not going to have a discussion about what is or what isn't a lot?
Mr. Chairman, I, I doubt about this whole subdivision thing. John, if somebody creates a subdivision, we've had this in the past, there's a whole lot of other things like detention and all that stuff that is not here today. So to this point in time, the county has not viewed this as a subdivision, because, as you know, that there is all the things when you create a subdivision, like Tim's talking about with a developer, that you have to do detention, you have to talk about roads, you have to talk about utilities. None of that has been brought in front of this, this board or your staff, because I think that this has been looked at from the beginning, that it's not a subdivision. And now we're, we're kind of, as Tim says, we're talking about two different topics here. I think we're going down a path that this is not a subdivision, as we have looked at in the past, unless, you know, the county attorney tells us otherwise, but this will be the first time that this has come up on this particular zoning, because there's a whole lot of other things that go with the subdivision that were never required or recommended by staff.
However, Commissioner Odd, if you look at the stipulation letter dated February 12th of 2020, number five, relates to stormwater retention for the Castile Road Lot will be accomplished by an onsite rain garden infiltration system design. So they have done it.
That's a stipulation letter, but did staff, I don't, I don't remember seeing anything or any discussion about.
So David Brayden.
I mean, I might have missed it.
Because I think I addressed it. I just want to make sure. Yes. Onsite stormwater management will be required for any lots less than 80,000 square feet. We do have, the way stormwater treats the definition of a subdivision, we don't treat, a lot split would be a lot split. We say if you have a piece of property, you divide it into two lots, that's a lot split. But as soon as you go to three lots, you're, you're subdividing that parcel into, we call, I treat it as a subdivision, and you need to provide stormwater management. We do have a provision in the code where if you create lots 80,000 square feet or more, which from a stormwater perspective, we would try to incent larger estate-sized lots, you do not have to provide stormwater management for lots that are 80,000 or larger. We tried to recommend configuring this so they would all be 80,000, which I think they could. But as of right now, one of them is not, so that one lot would need to provide stormwater management. The 80,000 square foot lots would not. Does that make sense?
And he is, and he is correct. He is providing for it in the stipulation letter.
And do you have those letters from the sewer, I mean, from the county department, that septic is acceptable for the record?
Kevin Moore. Has the applicant received approval from the health department or worked with the health department to have the essentially two additional septic systems approved for the site?
The health department hasn't issued its final decision, but that's, it's not a final three lots yet. They do have, have been, all the information has been submitted to them, the soil study test, the soil report, as well as the determination that sewer was not available, has been submitted to the health department. And again, the soils, the soils report is one you can read, and you have a soil scientist tell you whether that's going to be acceptable for septic system purposes, and it is. It fully meets it. They've done it for the entire 6.6 acres. And, you know, the thing of it is, is we can talk in theory. The reality is, when you get down to the actual real reality of this situation, and that is, if you want to just destroy and demolish the existing house and ruin that value of that pretty house, you could do three lots of a minimum of 80,000 square feet. This is simply to accomplish, you've got an existing house, and you need to make the one lot 50,000 square feet, which means there's more than enough room on this 6.6 acres to accommodate three septic systems and to accommodate the stormwater. And we've even made sure we noted that, that we can do that on the one lot. So the reality of it is, this, this, this is not attempting to get around the area requirements for any of these, for any of these code requirements. It's just simply trying to acknowledge that there's an existing house there, and let's protect that and not simply destroy it for the sake of technically meeting a code section which shouldn't have to apply in this situation under this zoning. We've, we've got the area there. This just accomplishes that in a, I think, a very smart and appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, if I could call you back up, please? The property that is directly to the east of this one, where we were shown the, the creek line going through there.
Yes.
Do you know if that property is on sewer or septic?
I'm sure it's on septic.
Septic? Okay. And then the property to the north of that, is that on sewer or septic as well?
I'm almost certain it's on septic.
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
Nope.
Unless she's called up.
Any other questions?
No, you, you have the floor still.
Okay, so with that, I would like to make my motion to approve Z-73 of 2019 to the RR Rural Residential District, subject to the stipulation letter dated February 12th of 2020, along with the site plan dated February 12th of 2020, along with all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in comment or conflict.
Okay, comments from the board, questions from the board? So let me see if I understand this. We're going to have two lots that are bigger than 80,000 square feet. We're going to have one that's perhaps less. There is the potential that that lot that is less than 40, 80,000 square feet could not be approved by the public health system for anything, because it's less than 80,000 square feet and doesn't have the, the appropriate soil. There's the potential that that lot may not be approved for any kind of construction. Is that true? Okay. So the question I have is, have you checked, have you checked, Bill, have you checked the county code as to what the requirement is for, for septic in the code ordinance that Mr. Paulson quoted?
Mr. Chairman, I can cite you, many developments out in the District One area that have been done on about an acre, an acre and a quarter that are on septic that did not have the R-80 requirements, if you would like me to rattle those off right now, but, and I know those have been all done with.
I'm just trying to get the facts out here. Let me finish. I just, so what does the, what does the county code say about, about septic? You need to have your mic on.
It would still be allowed. It'd be based on what the, the Board of Commissioners want to do and how they would have access, how that'd be determined, whether they had ultimately would have access or not. But, but, but from Mr. Moore's point of view, they've applied for it, but ultimately, if the, if the Board of Commissioners give them the zoning and they're not granted it through this, through the Department of Health, then they're not going to be able to develop it as they planned, so.
So I guess the question is, what takes, what takes precedence, the county code or the public health department's decision?
Well, the county code allows for it to be able to happen, but obviously, if it's conditioned that they would have to have sewer before they would have to be able to develop, you could make that as part of stipulation as part of that, which I think would be planned.
That's addressed with tied to the permit in his stip letter. He, he's not, he's, he's agreeable to the septic and stormwater retention for Castile Lot will be accomplished by an onsite rain garden infiltration system design. Sewer disposal for Castile Road Lot will be attained by a septic tank system for which a soil study has been completed. A septic tank permit must be obtained prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, I think to answer your question, the, all the board does is allow the number of lots. The public health, if they don't say yes to a septic, you can't build.
Okay.
If you don't have sewer, and public health says no, you can't have septic, then you can't build. So, I mean, we're, we're kind of delving into the public health ring here.
All right, good point. I won't go there. All right, before I, before I cast my vote here, a couple of things. First of all, there's been the, there's been a story here that has been a continuity of the. First of all, there's been the, there's been a story here that there's been a continuity of the five families in this area, which clearly that wasn't the case, because this is property that was disputed 20 years ago when somebody tried to sell it and, and then downzone it, or upzone it, okay? And they tried to change the zoning, and there was a dispute about that, and it came back, and it ended up being what it is now. The second thing is, is that the original zoning proposal is for R-40, okay? And the board doesn't, the planning commission didn't support that, nor did we support that if the vote comes out that way. So in fact, we are working all we can to preserve the nature of, the character of the neighborhood. The second thing here is that I always look for a middle road. And in one, in this case here, the applicant has, has agreed to down, to go from four, from four tracks to three. So he's made, I believe, a, you know, a good faith effort to try and find the middle road here, whereas the, we have opposition saying, no, they want to, they want to retain exactly where it is right now without any changes. That would have been true except for one major problem here, the school. The school, when it came in there, changed the overall nature of this neighborhood. And we're trying to pretend like that that has no impact on the character of the neighborhood. That's simply not true. Look at, look at on the map what the school did to this overall neighborhood here, all right? It did have a big influence on it, and consequently, it had to have an impact on the current property. And to pretend otherwise, you know, just doesn't, you know, flies in the fact of reality. So as much as I appreciate the efforts by the, by the advocates who want to preserve the nature of this community, the bottom line here is, is that there have been outside circumstances that have changed the nature of this, and we're trying to find an accommodation here, and accommodation is always reached when both sides try to find some middle ground. And I think that RR here is an appropriate middle ground for this, so I'm going to support the, I'm going to support the, the motion. Any other comments? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Ott in opposition.
No, no Commissioner.
Commissioner Cupid in opposition, I apologize. All right. Four to one with Commissioner Cupid in opposition. All right, thank you. All right. Onto regular.
Yes, sir. Resoning case Z-10, Cesar Romero, request a rezoning from O-N-I to N-R-C for the purpose of a hair salon and landlot 639 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Powder Springs Road, south of Horseshoe Ben Road. Is the applicant present? Let's make sure the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-10? No? Let's make sure there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Hello, my name is Henry Garcia. I'm here on behalf of Cesar Romero. Basically, Mr. Romero purchased this property, but last year, to open a hair salon for his wife. Currently is O-N-I, and he wants to, he would like it to be LRC or NRC. I think he applied for NRC. We hire, and there's a cemetery next to it, so we hired an archaeologist, and there were no human graves near the property line, as well as on the backside. We also hire, well, he also hired an engineer to move the entrance basically to the middle of the property with 10 parking spots. And the backside of the property is going to be, is not going to be utilized. And it has a septic tank, which is in operation. And basically, she's going to be seeing customers or clients by appointment. That's what, she's, she basically sees customers at her home now, by appointment. And that's basically her operation right now. Have any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support? Any in opposition? Seeing none, Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chair. There's no one in opposition today, but I do have questions, sir, with respect to parking on the property and the provisions for impervious surface. Your plan has you adding 10 parking spaces in the front, which would require you to demolish the asphalt in the back in order to meet the impervious, impervious requirements. Are you familiar or in agreement with that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so you would be removing the asphalt?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then there's also another provision with the Cemetery Preservation Commission for a fence to be added along that lot line. And they had suggested just a, they had suggested a certain type of fence. Give me one second, I'll spread my notes. Yes, a chain link fence, and then the planning commission suggested a, a wrought iron fence. Are you amenable to the wrought iron fence?
Yes, we are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on top of that.
Okay, great. Then we don't need to make any changes then. All right, thank you. With that, I move that we approve Z-10, deleting the application request to the LRC zoning district, subject to planning commission comments and suggestions, and staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
You have a second? Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
I just have one question. You mentioned that they had a study done of the cemetery, and there's no graves on their site, but are they, do they meet the 50-foot buffer requirement?
They still have to meet the planning, excuse me, the Preservation Commission suggestion for protecting the cemetery.
With the fence?
Give me one. Yes, with the fence.
They have to do the 50-foot buffer.
If you look at page 374.
Can, can you pull the map back up so we can see where exactly the cemetery is? I, I don't see any markers, so I don't know where.
Okay, if you watched the planning commission video, there was discussion about that, and this site was operating as an office before. And considering that there were no changes in that cemetery from the other operation to this one, Gault didn't add that provision, but he did add some of the other protections that were listed here by the Preservation Commission. Exclusive of that.
I don't, I don't know when this was built and if the 50-foot buffer
It's not listed here.
From the cemetery was in place originally.
Yes, it's not listed here, but let me just go through.
I just want to make sure that's, but if Cemetery Preservation Committee is.
They're, yes, but here it states no buffer and just fencing only to be placed on the property line, along with the sign that states that there's a Cemetery Preservation Buffer, do not disturb, shall be erected on the fence. We didn't want to be onerous to them because they're coming in, occupying a building that had already existed and operated as an office.
Oh, okay. And that's what it was when it was done?
Yes.
So it's kind of grandfathered in, but, okay, well.
I mean, right now, just from even calculating, they're gonna have to probably spend about $3,000 in adding in this fence, which is above and beyond the use that was in existence prior to them coming there. So they're doing more to protect the cemetery that's there, but, yeah, again, it just was deemed to be onerous to require them to do more beyond that.
Is there an office operating in there now, or is it out?
No, they're not continuing to operate.
So is the driveway, Commissioner Cupid here, a shared driveway with this adjacent?
No, ma'am. It's just for that side. So the fence would be actually erected, I believe, on that, on that line there. On the property line, that's close to the driveway.
So are they gonna have to redo the parking on the back then?
They're gonna have to remove that asphalt.
Where, where exactly is the cemetery in the, the picture we're looking at right now? Is it up, up there where the R-20 is?
Yes.
Okay. And so when you say on the property line, the property line goes right up against the building there? Well, even, even if it's not exactly right, I mean, the driveway goes off on an angle, so. Can, can you zoom in on the cemetery? Because you really can't see if there's any tombstones there where they're gonna have to kind of go daggling across. I'm, I'm just kind of curious as to how that's all gonna work.
So how does they have 20 feet?
Even if it's close, their dri, is their driveway not totally on their property? Their driveway is. Yeah, well, there's internet problems right now.
So they have to comply with the county ordinance on buffer then?
Again, that, that condition was removed.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All right, call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, Z-17. Z-17 was continued?
Yes.
I thought, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yeah, I got the sub-two part. All right, so we're on to other business then, huh?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me see if I can get this one right. How about OB eight?
Four.
No, I didn't get it right. How about OB four?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is John Peters, and I am the zoning vision manager. Your first item on today's other business agenda is item number four, which is to consider a reduction of minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 16,625 square feet for Mr. Christopher Holt for property located on the north side of Lower Roswell Road, west of Bowling Drive and Land Lot 864 in the 17th District. By way of background, the Board of Commissioners considers all reductions to minimum lot size pursuant to a code amendment to Section 134, 271, 7A, adopted on February 27, 2018. Subject property is zoned R-20, which requires a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. The lot we're talking about is lot number seven, is proposed to be 16,625 square feet. And the applicant has filed this other business application to take care of this zoning criteria deficiency. Staff has researched this property and found that the subdivision was planted in 1964, and at that time, all the lots were 20,000 square feet. The current owner of lot number seven also owns lot number eight, which is shown on the attached exhibit. The reason for lot size reduction is the owner of lot eight has a driveway, parking area, and landscaping that was built onto lot number seven a long time ago. And the owner of lot number eight would like to keep everything where it currently is on the ground, which has caused this other business application to come forward, which really moves the property line over 20 feet from where it currently is on lot number seven. Also moving the driveway cut for lot number eight would cause a loss of mature trees, and a power pole would have to be moved to accommodate a new driveway location for lot number eight. If approved, all other zoning criteria for lot number seven would be met regarding setbacks, impervious surface, et cetera. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed reduction of minimum lot size. Is the applicant present? Let's make sure the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number four? Let's make sure there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I've got a slide up here. It shows the lot that we're talking about and the location. We're proposing to, like they said, shrink it down to 16,625 square feet. Here's the original plat from 1964, I believe, that shows that it did conform at that time. What happened is that driveway was put in sometime in 1979. 20 feet of the western side was given to that adjacent house that you can see in the picture, causing the lot to then become 16,625 square feet. The proposed house that we'd like to build is 3,361 square feet, and it will fit within the R-20 setbacks, and also will conform to the max impervious rule as well. So that's a sketch of the house that we would like to build. Our only difference is, we would have a, a front entry driveway on the left, as opposed to what's being shown there, a side entry. And then that's the lot on the right. So that's it. We, we believe it will conform to the neighborhood. We've got some pictures of, of that street. That's the north side of Lower Roswell Road as well. It's showing, you know, just driveways and house locations. And as compared to the house that we're trying to build, we feel it'll be a good match for, for the neighborhood. The only question that I had was, we saw DOT made some recommendations. Recommendation number three, minimum spacing of a 50-foot tangent distance between driveways. On our site plan that we've got now, we've got a driveway coming in right there on the left side, right next to the existing driveway. The reason that was done is, if you look at the slope of the lot, it papers off to the right. So the site plan and the house, the driveway location and the house plan itself was selected to fit the topography for the lot. So that's it. That's it. We're just asked that we're allowed to build a house there. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else in support? Okay, in opposition?
My name's Hill Wright. When this first came up, there were signs posted. The signs didn't have the case number. So how are we in the public supposed to know? The average person in the public's kind of like, how do we find out about this? I happen to know how to look these things up and research them, so I did. And then I looked at the application, and that's my first objection to this, is the application has no justification, explains no need for, or any hardship in the application. So how does the public look at the application and know if it's reasonable or not, if the county accepts applications without that? Now, these present a lot of information here that's not, not in the application. I called down to get the information, and I'm told what you see online is all there is. So I even called my district commissioner and asked, and didn't get anything back, so. I didn't, there's something broken in the system here when, when there's no information available to the community to know what's going on. Now, I researched back and myself and found the deeds and the same thing, is that they've basically created a non-conforming lot. And then Commissioner Gabriel, you mentioned some, while ago, some other cases that you could pull up and show that it's been done before. So how does this not become a case in the future that some of the commissioner says, well, wait a second, I can pu, point to this case back here where it was granted, and, and use that as justification? So I'm concerned about the precedent set. And how do we protect the R-20 in our neighborhoods if we allow non-conforming lots all over the place? And, and I, I'm just really, you know, the whole, the pro, again, the process is broken, and I'm not sure it's a good idea, but the lot is, that they took, the 20 feet they took away is still there. Now, the hardship is that, well, there's a driveway would have to be moved. Is there some way that the driveway couldn't be shared or something, or some? Or some way that we, that another remedy so that you're not creating a non-conforming lot? Because I, I'm concerned about the president that this sets in the future and somebody comes back and says, well, you did it here, why can't we do it over here? So, that's really my.
Thank you, sir. Other, others in opposition? All right, John, what's the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend a board of commissioners approve the lot size reduction to 16,625 square feet with the district commissioner approving the final location of the new driveway.
We sure up?
All right, John, let's, let's talk a little bit about what the gentleman speaking in opposition spoke about. What exactly do we require for another business application?
For this type of application, we require, the application we filled out, we require a site plan to be submitted. And they, they post a sign in the yard that has the, the information for today's hearing. And they also send out letters to anyone within a thousand feet.
And the, the sign is put in the yard, your office fills it out, right? And then they give them the sign?
That's correct.
So it should have had the information on it that you were supposed to put in?
It should have the case number at the very top of the sign.
Okay, all right. That's all the questions right now, I might have more. So, Mr. Chairman, my assistant actually had created a PowerPoint because, as the opposition said, there was an incredible lack of, I don't know if we need it, but, because most of what the applicant showed is in the PowerPoint because none of that information was here. So just for future reference, if there's information that you think is necessary for this board to see at your presentation, it needed to be with the application. Okay, because this board needed to see it, the homeowners needed to see it, because you did bring out some information that I was going to bring out in, in the PowerPoint that we, that Kim created. So in some ways, this is kind of like an infill. It's a single home. As everybody up here knows, zoning did not go into effect in the county until 1972. Even though there were those lots, official zoning code was not adopted until 1972. What happened, happened back in 1979. Just to kind of address what the county has put in place to prevent this from happening moving forward, and what I'm referring to is the driveway and the parking pad, is that prior to the pouring of the footings or anything on a new house, there is an inspection that is now done by the county to make sure that all the setbacks and, you know, that you're not going over lot lines and everything else are adhered to before anything is poured. Because all the way back when I was on the variance board, we would have folks come in and, and a corner of the house would be over a setback line or there would be something that wasn't where it was supposed to be. And after the house is built, it's really hard to go back and make them tear it down. So what the county put in place was an inspection that's required before anything can be poured to make sure that things are conformed to. Obviously, back in 1979, that did not exist. And I think what you're seeing is, is a result of the stuff that, that was allowed to happen back then that is not allowed to happen today. I'm with the fact that this street, as you can see in this picture here, it's, a lot of the homes have been there for a while, the, the landscaping is fully developed. And I think that in seeing the house, because one of my questions was going to be, what does the house look like? Because I think it's very important to make sure that if a house is built on this lot, that it can form. Because one of the problems that, and, and you and I spoke during the break, one of the problems that we're having in District Two is especially in Indian Hills where houses are being torn down and, and replacement houses are being built that are not consistent with the neighborhood. So I am, in looking at the elevation that was shown today, which should have been in the package, I think that it would be consistent. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's other comments. Pretty much Kim's PowerPoint, I mean, was almost exactly what you saw from the applicant. He kind of said, I mean, is there anything else in there, Kim? No, everything that was, that we put in the PowerPoint, the applicant end, actually ended up showing almost the same pictures, the 1964, whatever, site plan, so. Go ahead.
This, this, the lot under question here is owned by this lot, this?
Yes, what happened was the same person bought both lots.
But they are separated.
They are, and they have been separated from the beginning. This is not a case where, you know, sometimes we see somebody comes in who has a bigger lot and then all of a sudden decides they want to peel off part of it to build another home. This has been two lots from the beginning. What happened was in 1979, when the drive, the circular driveway was, the part on the right was put in, it basically went over the lot line. So, so this is a little bit different from what we normally see where somebody just comes and wants to peel off a lot and it's going to be smaller than what's required. So with that, I make a motion to approve other business item number four. Subject to the district commu- district commissioner approving the final site plan, the district commissioner approving the elevations. And that is simply because we did not have them ahead of time. And so you need to submit all those to, to the office. Oh, I'm, actually, let me back up a minute. I know I'm in the middle of a motion, but can the applicant come up, please? I forgot to talk about the driveway. So now this property has not, has it been bought by someone else already?
It has not, no.
It has not?
No.
Okay, and you represent the current owner?
I, yes, I do, that's correct.
Okay. So I know DOT, and Amy will probably nod her head, would probably have preferred a shared, single curb cut. Right, Amy? I see your head going up and down. Are you willing to do the necessary easements and everything to have one curb cut that?
To share the existing driveway that's in place and kind of?
Yes, I'm up with something that, yeah, they tie in together.
I think that would, I believe that would work, I think.
Okay, all right. So then my motion was to approve it based on district commissioner with final site plan approval, district commissioner approving the elevations, there to be a shared driveway for both lots and all R20s setback requirements to be adhered to. Anything else, John, you want? And, and the impervious requirements to be met.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion, call a question. This is five to zero. All right, OB eight.
Other business eight is to consider a stipulation amendment for Brixmore Mapleton Walk LLC regarding rezoning applications Z61 of 1995 for property located on the east side of Floyd Road, the north side of Ayers Road, and the south side of Nickajack Road and Land Lot 41 of the 17th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned neighborhood retail commercial in 1995 for a shopping center with limitations on certain uses. One of the uses prohibited were stores that sold used goods. The applicant would like to delete this prohibited use since they are, they have a potential client that sells used goods. The applicant would also like the Board of Commissioners to approve a thrift store as a special exception for this property. There would not be any material change to the building or to the property because this, because of this amendment. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed stipulation amendment. The applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to this item? Let's make sure those three people opposed. All those who have addressed the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant owner, Brixmore, in this application on other business. This is concerning the Mapleton Walk Shopping Center located off Floyd Road. It's a great shopping center and within the shopping center is located Publix. So if you're driving on Floyd Road and it's the public shopping center, which is adjacent to the Kroger Shopping Center and at a very, very quality, great area of Mapleton and along Floyd Road. The area is shown on your screen as well, zoned NRC in 1995. As Mr. Peterson pointed out, that zoning was, actually rezoned this property from its NS neighborhood shopping category to NRC because it was being renovated at that point in time as a shopping center and it held that old neighborhood shopping NS category. What's being sought today on the end cap, which is at the very end, at the end of the shopping center is now a, has been, an empty 11,000 square foot tenant space. The Atlanta Project Youth Program is desirous of operating a thrift store to benefit young life in the 11,000 square foot space. That thrift store would be operated at a high level of retail management and operations. And the Atlanta Project Youth Program, so you know, is a project and youth program. And it's really, it's a ministry that touches over 1,500 adolescent lives every month to not only encourage and teach them to take charge of their life, but impact them in a meaningful way in their future as well. And that's what's proposed for this particular space. It's also important to note that in terms of a thrift store, this is operated, as I said, will be fully staffed and operated in a retail manner. It's 11,000 square feet. The Atlanta Project Youth Program, their budget for the final tenant renovation for this space is $800,000 that they've raised and they will be spending to renovate this space. So this is not a, put your secondhand clothing and items and furniture out the front door and let people come by and see what they want to buy. This is going to be operated fully and functionally as a retail store, it's just selling secondhand items. All donations of items will be received entirely in the rear. There's a, they have their specific plans, allow for that receipt, receiving area for donations in the rear of the store. Sinage will be appropriately placed directing that. It will be received and manned, meaning there will be employees there to receive that so they're not simply just dropped off. In addition, we have put in place, that is a stipulation. We've put in place a stipulation that no outside display of merchandise will be permitted at all so that the front of the store will likewise not have that out, that's outside storage or display of merchandise or items whatsoever. And we've also proposed that the Atlanta Project Youth Program, it would, will be called the Atlanta Community Thrift. This approval is specific to them only because of the high level of operational excellence and investment that they are making, and so that can be controlled. When this was submitted in early January, the Cobb County Code did provide that such a store was considered a special exception use and therefore we needed to apply for other business for that approval. Since that time, Cobb County has amended its ordinance and this store is now a permitted use under NRC. So what question remains is then, why are we still here asking for this and, and asking or making this request to you? And I want to speak to that in just a minute. And that is, the 1995 rezoning from NS to NRC. This property, as I said, had been zoned neighborhood shopping, was a shopping center, but it was zoned under that NS, so it was grandfathered. So when they were undergoing the significant renovations, they had to come in for rezoning in 1995 was when it was rezoned to NRC. So first, I want to show you though, a couple of pictures of what the interior would look like of this proposed store. If you don't mind flipping through those, I'll come over.
But he's going to flip through those and just show you an example of how this would be operated in the high level, that it would be operated as a retail store, as one you would entirely expect and as befitting of the community as well. Just so happens that those, that the items are donated and not purchased from a manufacturer. Now, going to the actual zoning and why we're here. What staff had determined and written up was that 1995, that there was a condition that prohibited the sale of used goods, and that was the phrase in your staff comments, the prohibition on the sale of used goods. And we sometimes see those, where prohibited uses even though permitted under the category are listed as stipulations. And that's what staff had picked up. And so I'm going to show you this 1995 minutes of that zoning decision. And what you can see is that when the Board of Commissioners rezoned this, this property from its neighborhood shopping grandfather category to NRC, it states that the, all previous stipulations and covenants will remain in force and that the letter of consent regarding continuation of the existing covenants is also a part of this. So there's, there's not specific stipulations actually on the zoning of this property that prohibit any use, okay? There are covenants in place. And let me show you those covenants that were in place at that time. Here are the protective covenants for the Ayers property, which is what this property was, that were recorded in 1988 in September of 1988 when, when this property was developed initially as a commercial shopping center without parcels. And consistent with state law, you can clearly see that these covenants will be binding for a period of 20 years. So from 1988, these covenants would be binding for a period of 20 years. That's consistent with state law that says covenants on commercial property only are enforceable and binding for 20 years. And that's consistent with those protective covenants and how they're stated and consistent with state law. These protective covenants are the ones that state that certain uses will be prohibited by covenant, one of those being the sale of used goods. So by covenant, the sale of used goods were prohibited only, not by zoning stipulation. Had the Board of Commissioners at that time wished to have those as zoning stipulations, they should have made them zoning conditions. Instead, they simply were confirming that these 1988 covenants would be continuing in, in effect since the property was undergoing a rezoning, and that's what occurred. They were continuing in effect to the extent that they applied and which they did, but as of 2008, these private covenants were no longer enforceable and are no longer binding on the property. Brixmore comes here as the shopping center owner and as a longtime member, corporate member and owner in this community out of an accommodation. Based on the change in the county code and the fact that these covenants are no longer enforceable in our position, that the covenants are still just covenants and were never actual zoning conditions or stipulations. We believe that we could go in legally this afternoon and pull the appropriate building permits, tenant finish permits, and business licenses for a, for the proposed thrift store without any approval from the board. But we applied for this in January. Brixmore very much has been working with the community. The stipulations that we've submitted were the result of community conversations with the Mapleton Improvement Coalition. We're not trying to make a legal argument, what we're trying to do is simply be good corporate citizens. Where we are today with it is some, is seeking approval as submitted. Or if the board is of the opinion and shares the opinion that I do, that there is nothing legally preventing or prohibiting this particular use at this time since the code has changed and since these covenants are not actually stipulations but mere private covenants and simple confirmation that that is the case and the board, we can withdraw and the, or the board can simply not make a decision. But that's where we are today as this has unfolded over the last couple of weeks. But regardless, and again, we're not waiving our right to insist that there are no current zoning conditions or zoning code prohibitions against the proposed use. But we are here out of an accommodation and as a result of our conversations with the community and with Brixmore, not wanting, with Brixmore wanting to be a part of that community and then working with that community. And this is an opportunity then to at least have some stipulations if the board wants to move forward in that direction that help control the concerns or mitigate against the concerns that have been identified to us. With that, I'm here to answer any questions and know this is somewhat unusual and how this has unfolded, but it's simply how it unfolded and given the circumstances over the last month. And I'm here to answer any questions and respectfully request your either approval or confirmation as requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there was an opposition?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and staff. My name is Ray Thomas. I'm the chair- I'm the Chair of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And thanks for giving me an opportunity once again to come and, and speak before this body. We request that this application to change the existing stipulation on the property, that no thrift store be allowed, we request that, that, that the application be denied. Now, we're not opposed to businesses coming to our community, particularly in emerging community like, like Mableton. But it has to be for the right use and the right purposes. I agree with Mr. Moore that this shopping center is the, probably the nicest, the best and most attractive shopping center that we have in Mableton. I, I agree with that. It is, it is in a highly visible corridor. Much care, much time, much effort has been, has been expended to monitor and protect the character and the look of this shopping center. As a matter of fact, the Mableton Improvement Coalition, on a quarterly basis, we've adopted Floyd Road and we pick up trash along that corridor every single quarter. This Saturday, as a matter of fact, we're picking up trash and you all are invited. Now, if this application is approved, this use would make all those efforts, all that time, almost none, null and void. Let me share with you what's going on right now. As we're speaking right now, this minute, this is what on display in our most attractive shopping center in Mableton. Please take a look at that. That is not acceptable. I'd like to highlight three important points as you consider this application. Floyd Road represents the premier shopping destination for Mableton residents. We're constantly seeking better services, new products, better services in the community in which we live. The customer base served by thrift stores is currently, or can be currently addressed by several other thrift stores that are, that are nearby in our community right now. Residents of new, single-family residential communities and townhome communities that are emerging in our area have the expectations that retail offerings will reflect the image of our community as it continues to grow. And so we ask that you deny this application as presented because there is a reason why this, this stipulation was written in back in 1995. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am here as Susie Citizen. I'm not connected to any groups other than my friends and family that we've discussed this amongst ourselves and what we've watched develop in our community. I was born and raised in South Cobb. When my mother moved here in the 40s, Camp Pyle and the East West Connector was a dirt road. We've been here a while. We've seen a lot of changes. I do appreciate that as a citizen, we can still stand and speak. And I appreciate all of your efforts in helping us in South Cobb thrive and come alive again and get back the neighborhoods that, that we love and want to live in. We do appreciate that. As far as, I came into this a little bit late in the game. I'm not really here to ask or to oppose. The semi you saw has caused quite a stir. I've been trying for several weeks to find out who the organization is going in. We don't want Floyd Road to become another Veterans Memorial. That just, that just is not acceptable. There's a lot of, we have enough junk lying around the south end of the county without, I don't know, I, I know now and I've heard some explanations as to what this thrift store will be and seeing the pictures, that's a little bit different. That has answered some of my questions. The general consensus among my friends and family has been, we would have preferred something different. We would all, we all agree, we would have loved a sit-down restaurant, a nice sit-down restaurant in that location. But the general consensus has been, we're tired of seeing it sit there empty. But we would like some reassurances that this is going to stay clean, it's not going to be junky, that semi is moved. And I don't know what this door might open in the future for resale or secondhand items. That's a little bit of a concern. But for the most part, I love thrift store shopping, but I, I want something nice in my community. And that, and Floyd Road has begun to develop into really nice area to be and live and the trail is there, we have a lot going on there. And I just don't want to see, and Mr. Moore, I do have to say, this morning, Mr. Moore answered most of these questions for me. But I'm presenting this to you as a concern as Susie Citizen and my neighbors and family, that some of this be in place to help us prevent anything running down and declining again. We don't want to go backwards in South Cobb. We just don't want to go backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seen no other opposition. John, the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman and Board, the staff recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to deleting the use of used goods as a prohibited use. No outdoor storage, no outdoor displays of merchandise, and all previous conditions remain in effect that are not affected by this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. As was remarked by one of the speakers, this prospective use has caused quite a stir and controversy among residents and they fall on different sides of the matter. And to be forthright, I was open to considering all suggestions. This is a shopping center that I frequent and it is one of the nicest shopping centers in this area of the county and district. And there has been a lot of interest in seeing quality viable use come into that vacant portion of the shopping center. In full disclosure, I am a thrift store junkie as well. However, with that being stated, there's a reason that's prompted this other business item, and I think it is the stated uses on the site, which the applicant's representative referred to. And that's listed here in this other business item on page nine of Exhibit 61, which is the covenant between the applicant and a civic association back in 1995. And the uses, instead of stating what is a desirable use, specifies what are prohibited uses. And in this list of prohibited uses includes used goods, which you can say items sold at a thrift store will constitute a used good. As pointed out by the applicant's attorney, the way this was written, it was written as a covenant that had a life of 20 years, which would mean that this covenant expired in But yet, it's still put in our books and to me seems to be the basis for this other business item. And I could say that even if the covenant has expired, that the covenants still reflect the intent and the, the perspective of residents at the time that this property, or that this other business item in 1995 was entered into. And from all the communication that I've weighed, the sentiment still remains very much the same. There would be no appetite to see any of the prohibited uses that are stated here to enter into the shopping center. So I would not necessarily lean on the legal basis of covenant, but leaning on the intent of the parties as they came together and their interest at the time, knowing that the interest of protecting that shopping center certainly has not changed from the shopping center's perspective nor the residents' perspective. And I share that because when I look at the covenants, everything I read still seems to be at play today. There's nothing that seems outdated. Every stipulation here has the, the interest of protecting the quality of the shopping center. I don't know if, if it was practiced back then, when this was entered into to do covenants with the community, if this was considered unique, if stipulations weren't added like we do today. But I just do not see this covenant not indicating that this was the intent of, of the community over time. So I lean on the, the sentiment of the residents that came here today to deny this other business application for that reason, but also others. Not really fleshed out as much as I would have liked when we considered code amendments. We do have a problem with thrift stores in the district. And it's not just the actions of the thrift store, but residents and how they regard thrift stores, which is similar to how they've regarded donation boxes, that you can drive by and see residents who just dump their goods that they want to donate in the front of these thrift stores throughout the district. And even though we've put code in place to ask the owners of these facilities and of our donation boxes to be responsible in keeping the area clean, it still has not diminished residents just dumping items in front of there. And I'm concerned that this practice would not change because this has been the practice of every thrift store that, that we have in the district. Even the Quality Goodwill store that we have in, off of East West Connector and Powder Springs Road that I frequent, you can drive by there and see goods outside of ours being dumped in front of that thrift store. And for this type of shopping center, this is not the type of activity that should be encouraged, especially when it's been noted multiple times that this is our best looking shopping center that we have in the district. I also believe that people always have the ability to overcome their actions, but it's quite telling when you see someone's initial presentation in the neighborhood to, to see what kind of manner of which someone will operate. And for the applicant to come in and to allow, and not just the applicant, but the owner of that shopping center to permit that trailer to be parked in the manner of which it is, sets a very low bar for what the community should expect of this operator. I do not believe that comportes with county code. And just on a level of just tactfulness, it, it, it just, it, it sends a very negative message to the community about what is to be expected from this point forward in the beginning. So I just have no comfort and confidence in even overcoming any legal argument of the 20-year covenant in approving this use as presented today. So with that, my motion would be to deny this other business item.
I have some questions. Is the, the trailer out front, the same, would that go away and that would move into the space or are they totally separate nonprofits?
I haven't talked to the owner to understand why the trailer is there, but it does have an advertisement on it letting the community know that they're coming.
But it's a drop, it's a donation center now, the trailer. People can bring, do you know, John?
That's what it says.
Okay, but is it Atlanta Youth, the same group that's trying to lease the space in the shopping center?
This is for Atlanta Thrift Community, the same.
That's the same, okay. And where would their deliveries be, in the back?
Yes.
And are there, where the neighborhoods are, the R-15 this neighborhood is, their deliveries would be dropped off?
In, in there, yes.
I kind of have a similar, similar situation on Canton Road that is, that we zoned a few years ago. It's a pet rescue thrift store for donations for their nonprofit. And because there are homes behind there where they drop off the goods, we have a gate and hours of operation to address that so that it's not a disturbance to the neighbors. And then the, the trailer out front is definitely unsightly and needs to go away, but I, I wasn't sure it was connected to the, the space. And since I was the one that brought forward the, the code change for NRC to allow thrift stores and consignment, this was submitted prior to the code change, so that's why it's here. But if this is denied today, now they, they could reapply and get it, I guess, down the road if it's not, if it's part of the code, is that?
Well, the staff would take the position that they could not do it today or tomorrow without some action by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, but it, would they have to wait the year, a year? I mean, I'm just trying to see what they're, what they could do anyway, regardless of what we do. I, I, I understand the community's input, I'm just trying to see what would be allowed. If the community doesn't want it and Commissioner Cupid doesn't want it, I, I understand that and I'm supportive of that. I just want to know what the options are if it's denied with the code having been changed in the middle of this.
It's staff, it's staff's position that the covenants are still good because it's not any covenant, but it was a zoning condition. The condition number one says, all previous stipulations and covenants remain in force. It doesn't say remain in force for 20 years, it says remain in force. So it's staff's position that they're good right now.
Okay, and it does say no used goods in the covenants. So that overrides that anyway?
That's right.
Okay, I didn't real, I didn't, I'm glad you pointed that out because that wasn't my question, but that's good to know.
Is there a parking permit for that trailer to be parked like that?
As far as I know, there's not, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, so pending on the outcome of today, when will that trailer be removed as it is also parked on an unhardened surface?
We could send code enforcement out there to take a look at it.
Any other comments? So if we vote yes, that means we support your commission, your motion to deny.
Yes, sir.
All right, call a question. Pass is five to zero. Am I right that we're done?
We're done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're adjourned. Okay, thank you. All right, we're adjourned.